If you're a voter, please take your seats. If you're not a voter, please stay in the bleachers. Is that better? Portland? Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me in the back? Emmy McCusker, can you hear my voice? Testing, one, two, three. In the back, Bill Drunzig, can you hear my voice? Testing, one, two, three.
Patrick, can you hear me in the back? Bill Drunzig, can you hear me now? Could you please start in the bathroom and see if you can hear me?
Testing, one, two, three.
No. Louder.
Testing, one, two, three. Is that better?
It's better. I'm loud.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead. If there are any new voters here today, would you please rise to be recognized? No new voters? Okay. I'm Mike Norath. I'm the moderator. Two hundred and fifty years ago, on March 11th, 1766, the first town meeting for the election of officers was held in Manchester. That was eleven years before Vermont declared itself an independent republic and twenty-five years before we became part of the United States of America. For the next two hundred and fifty years, through war and peace, famine, feast and famine, good times and bad, through Federalists, Whigs, Democrats, Republicans, and Bull Mooseers, this Manchester Town Meeting has each year elected officers and decided the important questions that have confronted our beloved town. We have a tradition in Manchester of having spirited debates and a free exchange of ideas at our town floor meetings. As someone observed a few years ago at one of our town meetings, our traditional floor meeting is what brings us together and defines us as the unique community we are. At a time when our system of self-government is perhaps under its stiffest challenge ever from Act 46, this is a tradition I seek to preserve and maintain as moderator. It's my duty to maintain order while guiding us through the agenda which the Select Board has set before us today. With your cooperation, I will attempt to fulfill that duty. Our meeting today is governed by Vermont law, and to the extent not provided by Vermont law, we're governed by Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, Eleventh Edition. With a motion and two-thirds vote, we can suspend any of Robert's rules, but we cannot suspend Vermont law. Among other things, that means we cannot take binding action on any issue not contained in the warning, which you'll find on pages six and seven of Part A of the Town Report. According to Robert's Rules, each voter is allowed ten minutes to debate each question before us. I will not recognize you a second time on the same question until everyone has had an opportunity to speak a first time on that question. You will need a suspension of the rules to speak a third time on the same question. If you choose to ask a question during your time for debate, the time answering your question counts against your ten minutes, not the time of the person giving the answer. All questions must be addressed to the moderator. No back and forth with the Select Board, Town Manager, or another person is allowed. You must be recognized by the moderator to speak and debate, and please come to the microphone if you want to speak, and I'll recognize you to start your ten minutes. Unlike the Congress, you cannot yield the balance of your time to another person. We need a motion on each article before we can debate it, modify it, or dispose of it. We can amend any main motion and amend the amendment once. Then we must vote, first on the amendment to the amendment, then the amendment as amended, any subsequent amendments, and finally the article as amended. If you're confused at any point as to where we are, ask, and I will attempt to clarify. Undoubtedly, the most important rule in Robert's is to respect every speaker's opinion and give them your attention when they speak. This is a contest of ideas, not of personalities. It is therefore inappropriate to cheer, clap, or question the motives of another member in your speech. Debate is decided by our vote, not by the number of people who speak on any side of an argument. If someone has already made your point, consider if it is necessary to repeat it. If you're not a Manchester voter, please stay in the bleachers. If you are a Manchester voter, be sure you've checked in at the tables at the rear and stay in the voting area, which is the seats on the floor here. Otherwise, your vote will not be counted. Normally, we'll vote by voice vote. If I'm unclear as the result of a voice vote, I'll call for a division or standing vote, which will be counted by the justices of the piece. Seven voters can request a paper ballot on any question, even after the results of the standing vote have been announced, but before the next article has been moved and seconded. While we will attempt to expedite any paper ballot vote, please be aware that they do take extra time, and you may lose some of your supporters as a result of the delay. At any time, if you're unsure of what procedure to follow or what question we're voting on, please ask me to clarify, as you're probably not alone. Only registered voters in the town of Manchester are allowed to speak or vote at town meeting unless granted permission by two-thirds of the voters present. In an attempt to expedite our meeting and get reliable information from agencies requesting appropriations, as well as town agency heads, for the last several years, we've agreed by unanimous consent to allow one non-voter from each agency requesting an appropriation from the town and any non-voter town agency head to speak to the article that concerns their agency without requiring a separate vote for each speaker. So, in an attempt to once again expedite our meeting, I ask you, is there any objection to allowing one non-voter from each agency requesting an appropriation from the town and any non-voter town agency head to speak to the article that concerns their agency without requiring a vote of this body for each speaker this year? Please raise your hand if you object to using that procedure. Seeing none, it is so ordered. Now, I'd invite you to turn to page six of the Town Report. Point of information?
Yes, sir.
Before we begin, could we lead, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would invite you to.
Very well.
Close your eyes. Remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Richard. Legal voters of the town of Manchester, County of Bennington, State of Vermont, are hereby warned and notified of the following events relating to the annual meeting of the town floor meeting. Beginning at 1:00 PM on the 27th day of February 2016, the so-called floor portion of the annual town meeting will convene at the Manchester Elementary Middle School Gymnasium, 80 Memorial Avenue, to transact any business not involving voting by Australian ballot or voting required by law to be by ballot. Article One, to present awards and make acknowledgements, and for this article, I would call on Mr.
Is this working? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Ivan Beatty, the Chair of your Select Board, and I would just like to start by thanking you all for coming on this beautiful Saturday, and I would like to introduce the other members of the Board and some of the department heads that I know that are here. If I miss anybody, please let me know. At the table, as I said, I'm Ivan Beatty, the Chair. Wayne Bell is the Vice Chair. Steve Nichols. Carol Latuga. And then, of course, Lisa Souls, who is enjoying her last meeting as a Select Board member with us here this afternoon. And I'd like to thank Lisa for her six years of service. Department heads that I know that are here in the building. John O'Keefe, our Town Manager, who's joined us here up at the table. Ruth Woodard from the Finance Department. Janet Hurley, Planning and Zoning. I believe Dave Sheldon's here, from Water and Sewer. Jeff Williams from the Department of Public Works. Next to him, Chief Michael Hall from the Police Department. And on the other side, Liz Ambule from the Parks and Rec Department. Anita Sheldon, of course, is sitting at the table as our Town Clerk and taking the minutes of the meeting here this afternoon. And Philip Moore, Fire Chief. Did I miss any department heads? Hey, I did something right already. Thank you for coming, and I'll pass the microphone along.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to Article One?
Good afternoon. The Manchester Select Board is proud to dedicate the 2015 Town Report to the men and women that keep our town running so efficiently and effectively, the department heads who oversee our town departments. Could I ask, as I introduce these five department heads, could I ask them to come and join me at the table? Five department heads that stand out for their dedication and longevity are Ruth Woodard, Dave Sheldon, Jeff Williams, Michael Hall, Philip Grubb Moore. Come on down. Each of these supervisors have more than thirty years of service to our town, with Jeff Williams quickly approaching forty years. Now, just briefly, let me embarrass you a little bit. Ruth Woodard, Director of Accounting and Finance, known for her laser focus and aptitude for numbers. She's kept the town finances in order since 1986. She's a constant and reassuring presence with a smile, welcome, and wealth of information for every taxpayer who visits with a payment or a question. Dave Sheldon, Superintendent of Water and Sewer, started working for the town in 1982, sometimes referred to as the MacGyver of town government. His ingenuity and ability to think outside the box helps the town solve problems quickly and cost-effectively. Jeff Williams, the Director of Public Works, has worked for the town since 1977. In recent years, the Highway Department transformed into the Public Works Department, responsible not just for roads and bridges and sidewalks, but maintenance of town facilities, including parks, grounds, and buildings. Jeff monitors and guards our infrastructure and affects repairs quickly and quietly. He's a soft-spoken, salt-of-the-earth journeyman who carries to his responsibilities a big stick of experience that's been invaluable over the years. Police Chief Mike Hall has served the Manchester Police Department since 1983. Chief Hall follows in a long line of strong, but subtle-mannered police chiefs such as Dana Thompson and Fred Westner. He's known for his discretion and common sense and balanced approach to problem-solving and policing in a visitor-based economy. And under Chief Moore, the Fire Department has continued to represent the embodiment of sacrifice and commitment. Anyone who works with Grub knows he still has plenty of fire left in his belly, but that his passion for public service is tempered by his sense of humor and his instinctive nature to always be first on the dance floor at the annual firefighters banquet. These individuals routinely step forward when others do not. They are leaders, not just in town government, but in our greater community. They are the doers with a can-do attitude when given nearly impossible tasks. They don't throw up their arms, would rather hunker down and get to work. They perform their duty at the highest ethical standards with honor and dignity. They are a team of players who put aside self-interest to achieve a common goal. They are all members of the so-called Baby Boomer generation, inspired by President Kennedy and his call to arms, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." These dedicated public services make the servants, make the job of the Select Board and the Town Manager easy by ensuring the quality of life and safety without fanfare every day. We are proud to call them our own and believe they accomplish each day as guardians and caretakers of our community. We honor you. We thank you. Thank you very much. And the big one, as are our covers for many years now, will be displayed at the Kilburn Town Meeting Hall in, at the Town Hall. Carol Latuga, we'd like to add something to this. We thank you all that, everybody get photos that needs them. Andrew, we good? Okay. Tara? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Carol Latuga.
Thank you. This is the memorial part of our presentation. We like to acknowledge people that were very active in this town, who meant a lot to most of us and have served us so well over the years and have passed this year. The first one is Doug Shaw. Many of you know him. He was on the Board at Burn Burton for years. He served at the vestry at Zion Episcopal. He was on the Planning Commission and the Transportation Committee. Factory Point Square, it goes on and on. He did a great deal of public service. He was a great lover of the outdoors and even skied almost to the end of his life. So, he will be greatly missed for his contribution to this town. The other person is John Ringwood, who served as our Chairperson on the Planning Commission for years. He was active in the Catholic Church. He was also on the Development Review Board. He had just recently retired from Carrara Cement in Rutland. Most people remember him as a person who walked everywhere in this town, and that's probably how most of you would remember him, is walking everywhere in Manchester. The third person I'd like to acknowledge is Pauline Moore, who is retiring this year as our Town Assessor, and she has contributed greatly to this town since 2004. She will be continuing to work on the Economic Development Committee for the town, and you will still be seeing her around. She worked with Pauline for years, and Pauline is the one who paid the tribute to her. Thank you. Joyce, excuse me. I'm talking about Pauline. No, I'm talking about Joyce, is the one who did the memorial for her because they have worked together for many years. She is also going to be missed on a full-time basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Article One? Article One doesn't require any action bias, so we'll move on to Article Two to hear an act upon the report of the town officers, and I call on the Chairman of the Select Board, Mr. Beatty.
I just want to report a couple of errors in the Town Report. For the first one, you need go no farther than the cover of Part A, where apparently Mike Hall is the police chef. We spelled it once right on the cover, so that means we batted 500. That would put you in the Hall of Fame if we were playing baseball. The other error is not really too germane to this meeting. However, it is in the numbers, which is something I care deeply about. On page 14, about the middle of the page, under Planning Department, on the 2014-2015 actual expenses, you'll see an entry of $15,054.97. Remember that number, because if you turn to page 19, at, under Town Appropriations, the very first one, in the same year, you see exactly the same number. We did not spend that money twice. That's a double entry. You can enter it in either place. I don't think it matters to me which. I believe in that year it was a voted appropriation, but I'm not sure, but, and I'm told it was. Those are the only true errors that I know about, John. Do you know of others?
Does that mean the total needs to be reduced?
I didn't, in our, it's not germane to last year's budget, or this budget year that we're in now, or next year's budget, and I didn't go through the numbers to see if it went to the bottom line. And it's just in the Town Report. It's not in our actual figures at the Town Hall. So, if these numbers all came from those figures, then the bottom-line numbers are correct, and I believe that's the case.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article Two?
It's always appropriate to recognize people for long service to the town as those who've been appropriately recognized on the cover of this year's Town Report. However, last year, there was a vote, perhaps it was simply non-binding, but it still was a vote unanimous, that this year's Town Report be dedicated to Linda Spence. The reason that I understand that the Select Board did not do so is because, among other reasons, there apparently is a policy that the Town Report is dedicated and recognizes only people who are alive. Nevertheless, given what Linda has done to the town, for the town, I should say, how she has represented it with great distinction, and many of, all of its citizens being responsive and a Town Clerk of singular distinction, I am very unhappy as a citizen that she was not recognized as per the vote on this, on the cover of this year's Town Report. And if the objection is that, well, we only recognize people who are living, and even though we have citizens who were properly recognized this year, couldn't there have been an exception made for Linda Spence and that the honorees that were recognized this year, that could have waited until next year?
I realize in my haste to move things along here, I started this article without requiring a motion first, so is there a motion to approve Article Two? Bill Drunzig, if so, a second. Georgine Bonifanti, thank you. Are you ready for the question on Article Two, which is to approve the report of the town officers? If so, all those in favor of approving Article Two, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and Article Two is approved. Article Three, to determine by vote the day taxes shall be payable and what discount, if any, shall be allowed if paid on or before the time specified, in what interest shall be charged for delinquency? I call upon the Treasurer, David Fielding.
I move the town and the school taxes for fiscal year 2016-17 are due and payable at 4:30 PM on the following dates and percentage amounts. On 9/9/2016, town taxes, 43 percent; school taxes, 60 percent. On 2/10/2017, 57 percent of the town taxes and 40 percent of the school taxes. I further move that no discounts be allowed if taxes are paid on or before the due dates, and I also further move to charge the maximum interest and penalty allowed by law on unpaid amounts. The current law interest late, or on late payments is 1 percent for the first three months and 1 and 1/2 percent per month thereafter, and there's a penalty of 8 percent on the unpaid taxes after the second installment.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion? Bill Drunzig. You may continue to address it if you want to, David. Thank you. Anyone else on Article Three? If not, the question is, shall we approve the payment of town and school taxes for fiscal year 2016-17 to be due and payable at 4:30 PM on the following dates and percentage amounts? On September 9th, 19, 2016, 43 percent of the town taxes and 60 percent of the school taxes, and on February 10th, 2017, 57 percent of the town taxes and 40 percent of the school taxes. And further, that no discounts be allowed if taxes are paid on or before the due dates, and also that the maximum interest and penalty allowed by law on the unpaid amounts, which is 1 percent per month for the first three months and 1 and 1/2 percent per month thereafter, with a penalty of 8 percent on the unpaid balance after the second installment. Are you ready for that question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and Article Three is approved. Article Four, shall the town appropriate $4,417, excuse me, $4,417,188 to defray the operating expense of the budget for the ensuing year, less anticipated non-property tax revenue plus any voted appropriations? Is there a motion on Article Four? So, move by Ruth Woodard. Is there a second? Ron Mancini, the Chairman of the Select Board, Mr. Beatty.
There are a lot of numbers and a lot of noise in the, in the budget. I'm gonna try to boil it down and make it as concise and clear as I can. I hope you can bear with me. I know the numbers well because we've been through them so many times, so it may be difficult for me to try to explain it in a way that's not obvious to me, but maybe not so obvious to you. The, for 2016, for the first time, the budget has been divided into two separate articles. Article Four, which is the one we're discussing now, is the operating budget, and Article Five, which we'll discuss after this one, is the capital budget. The budget summary begins in Part A of the Town Report on page nine. A department-by-department breakdown is on page 10, and I find that very helpful in finding bottom-line numbers on each department. The budget in its entirety is comprised of five basic components. The two components on the revenue side are non-property tax revenue and property tax revenue. Pretty simple. Pretty simple. The three components on the expense side are operating expense, which we're discussing now, capital expense, which will be under the next article, and voted appropriations. Those are the five components. Article four asks for a specific amount of money, and that specific amount is $4,417,188 to defray the operating expenses of the town. Now, it's difficult to discuss Article four without considering the impact of Article five, since they both represent general fund spending. So I'll start out with some general discussion. It became apparent in our early discussions of the fiscal year 2017 budget that there was serious upward pressure on the expense side of the budget. The discussion continued over several meetings and ultimately led us, on January 21st, to identify $145,000 in cuts and $20,000 in transfers to the non-property tax revenue side, resulting in a $165,000 reduction in proposed property tax increase. Those changes are reflected in this budget. However, at the same time, at the same meeting, the Board accepted a proposal from Police Chief Hall to create an investigator position in the Police Department. This action added back in to the expense side, resulting... It added $75,000 back into the expense side, resulting in a net reduction of $90,000 in property tax spending from the original proposed fiscal year 2017 budget. Again, these are the numbers that we're looking at here this afternoon. In spite of these efforts, overall, between both operating and capital spending, there is an increase of $278,768. Included in this number is $20,000 that was approved in fiscal year 2016 as voted appropriations and are in the 2017 budget as budgetary line items. These three items... Well, it's actually two items. It represents a marketing increase of $10,000, which was approved as a voted appropriation last year, and the $10,000 total number of expense for the Fourth of July celebration and street fests. Those were items that were approved as voted appropriations, so they're added into the budget this year. They don't represent an increase. They were approved and will be spent in this fiscal year. They're just shifted from the voted appropriation part of the budget to the operating side. So if you back that out as an increase, the real increase in spending is $258,768, or an overall increase in spending of 5.5 percent. That's this article and the next article combined. Now to get to fiscal year 2017, or Article four. This budget anticipates an increase of $111,268 in spending, or 2.6 percent. Now, of this $111,268, $75,000 is for the additional police officer, which I mentioned earlier. There's also a $7,000 increase for the fire department, which was recommended by the recent public safety study, and included in that number is the $20,000 shift relative to the aforementioned marketing July 4th street fest. Without these new items... Let me get to the number here. The increase in spending from fiscal year 2016 to fiscal year 2017 in the operating budget would be $9,268, or 0.2 percent. Sounds like good news. However, non-property tax revenues, which includes local option tax revenues, state aid, and use of reserve funds, is anticipated to decrease by $26,350 from $2 million... And these numbers are in your town report. From $2,189... $2,189,50, decreasing to $2,162,700, or about 1.2 percent. That's a 1.2 percent decrease in non-property tax revenue. As an aside, I probably should add that local option tax revenue has increased over the past two years, slightly above 10 percent. In this year, the last four calendar quarters, it's gone up approximately between 6 and 6 and 1/2 percent, and that's quarter over quarter. In the most recent quarter that we reviewed, which was fourth quarter 2015, it was the highest receipts since 2008 for sales tax, and 2008 was when the sales tax structure changed, because clothing was pulled out. And it's the highest ever fourth quarter, calendar quarter, for rooms, meals, and alcohol. That may be a good sign. We haven't blended those increases into our operating budget, because there's a different mechanism for using local option taxes, which will be explained in a later article. So approval of Article four, as proposed, would result in a real spending increase of $91,268 in the operating budget, and that accommodates the things that we spoke about before. If you couple this with the $26,350 decrease in non-property tax revenues...
Mr. Chairman, your time is up. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow the Chairman to exceed his time? Orland Campbell, seconded by Sylvia Jalavet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules are suspended, and you may continue.
Thank you, and my apologies, Mr. Moderator. When I read this at home, I got it within the timeframe. I've elaborated a little bit. Okay, if you combine the $91,000 increase with the $26,000 decrease in property tax revenues, it would result... And this is what you all care about. ...in a net increase in the town tax rate of about 4.1 percent. And what this means for... This is the municipal tax rate, the part that you pay for local government. What this means for a taxpayer is that if you own a home valued at $300,000, your actual municipal tax will increase by about $27 as a result of approval of Article four. Now, Article four does not live in a vacuum. It's coupled to Article five, and I just want to touch on this briefly, as we contemplate what to do with Article four. We need to know what the impacts of Article five are. If you couple the effects of this article with the larger proposed increase in the capital budget, Article five, the net result is an increase of about 10 percent in the town tax rate. This is why we've agonized over this so much. What this means for you as a taxpayer, if your home is valued at $300,000, your municipal tax will increase by $66 if both articles are approved. Obviously, you can work the value of your home into that formula. If it's $600,000, your increase would be $132. I hope that explanation's been helpful. I hope you've had a chance to look at the numbers, and please ask questions.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Article four? Brad Meyerson.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion, and it would be a divided motion with respect to two items in the budget. First, with respect to the $75,000 appropriated for an additional police officer, this would be page 18, light item number 01-4-2510-22. I would like to make a motion to delete that amount from the budget. The second part of my motion is that I would move to delete the $25,000 appropriated for the marketing initiative from the budget, page 14, line item 01-4-0679-00. And I would like to... Well, first, I'm making the motion, so I don't know if there's discussion after the motion or not.
Okay. Actually, you've explained where you would take it from, but our article only appropriates a sum of money. So you need to subtract the amount that you propose to reduce from the motion amount, which is $4,417,188.
I would move to delete 100... Or subtract $100,000 from the total requested appropriation for operating expenses.
Okay, so you would propose to amend the amount to $4,317,188? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. You said there was a second part to...
It was a divided motion, simply because I wanted to have separate discussion on each item.
Okay. We can divide the question, if you want to do that.
I would. So move.
You would like to?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion to divide those two amendments? Debbie Hayes? Okay, so the question before us now is, shall we divide the two proposed reductions, one for $75,000 and one for $25,000, as two separate questions? That's a non-debatable question of whether we divide it, but you'll... If the motion passes, you'll be able to debate each one of them in turn, or if it doesn't pass, we'll debate the total reduction. Are you clear on that? Okay. All those in favor of dividing the question to have a $75,000 reduction and a $25,000 reduction as separate votes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and we have divided the questions. So the question before us now is, shall we amend the amount appropriated by reducing it by $75,000, which is Mr. Meyerson's intention, that that would be to remove the extra police officer? Are you ready for that question?
Can I speak to the question?
You may, as the... Thank you. Go ahead.
I do not believe that, given that many people in this community have a difficulty paying their property taxes, as well as because we, from a cost perspective and a social needs perspective, cannot justify the additional police officer added to the force so as to free up an officer to do investigative work, which I understand would largely focus on drug investigation. It is an unjustified expense to add $75,000 to the budget for that purpose. Now, I have discussed... Actually, before my letter to the editor this past week, I had a discussion with Chief Hall, for whom I have tremendous respect, and told him my objections, so that he would not feel as though he would be bushwhacked by the comments that I would be making today. However, there should always be a compelling need for any expense that is appropriated and for which funding is requested by the taxpayers. And I think a careful look beyond simply saying, "Well, it's our police department. We've got a drug problem. We have to pay this additional $75,000." It is still $75,000, which is a significant amount of money. It is not a fixed amount, because in future years, the amount's going to increase. When we are talking about a police officer, there are associated costs, which include equipment, uniforms, maintenance, and the like. And a concern that I have, in all honesty, that even though this is the first requested addition of a police officer to the force in, I think, about 24 years, which is comforting, it's still, number one, isn't necessary, and number two, when are we going to be asked to fund a 14th police officer? And just so that everything... Everybody is clear, we have eight full-time officers and four part-time officers. In the meantime, crime is going down. The Herald had an article this week about how crime in Rutland is going down. Crime statewide is going down. I got a very nice mailing, thoughtfully provided by the Department of Sheriffs this week, which included statistics... A fundraising letter, by the way, which included statistics. Statewide crime in various types of crimes have dropped significantly over the past three years. So with that in mind, we don't need another police officer to free up one of our existing officers for drug investigation and other investigative purposes. Also, the point needs to be made that we have other police departments or agencies that patrol Manchester, the state police, the sheriff's departments. They're here quite often, and our police department doesn't exist in a vacuum. So there are complementary services that are provided at our expense as taxpayers, so that we do not need to add a 13th officer because of the work of the state police and the sheriff's department. Also, since the appropriation is being asked in order to free up an existing officer to do drug investigative work and other investigative tasks, the state police drug task force recently received a taxpayer-funded appropriation of $1,400,000, $1.4 million, to add five new detectives. Now, this past summer, the drug task force was working out of Manchester. Why do we need to fund an investigator, essentially, to do work that is essentially being performed by more than enough state drug task force investigators? We don't need it. It's not justified. It's an additional expense that is just added on to your property tax bill that cannot Many of our neighbors have a hard time paying their property taxes, and it's reassuring to hear the Chairman speak, too. Well, the increase that is being asked for this year is incremental. It's small, but increases add up over time. If we are truly committed to keeping property taxes reasonable in this town, we have to look at each and every spending item, and in particular...
And in particular, the largest single item being requested... I'm sorry. Can't hear me? Okay.
We need to look at each item of spending, and when there is a very large spending item being requested, which may be, again, a feel-good item, and I have tremendous respect for Chief Hall, but on this, I have to disagree with him. We do not need a 13th police officer simply to free up one of our existing officers to do drug interdiction, investigation, and other investigation. If we want an investigator, let's just take one of our officers and have him or her do the work, have them trained, so that that expenditure is not necessary. I ask it be deleted from the budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the question of reducing the budget by... The operating budget by $75,000, which would bring it to $4,342,188? John O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me? No? The attorney from High Hill did call me as well and give me the... And tell me that he was going to speak on this item. And I've always found him to be a straight shooter. He's always called me when he's going to talk about town meeting, about something that we've proposed. So I had some time to think about this, and it probably doesn't surprise you that I disagree with him. And... But I do have to say... And, but I do have to say, it did take a long time for me to wrap my arms around the fact that we need another police officer. It wasn't an easy decision to make that recommendation to the select board. I know the select board labored over it quite a bit. It comes from the fact that the world is becoming a smaller place, and a lot of the issues that didn't used to affect Manchester are now affecting Manchester. I know that the attorney was talking about the 13 police officers that we have. That's not how I would phrase it. We have eight full-time police officers. It's a number that we've had for a long time. We do have some part-time certified police officers. What I think everyone in the room needs to know is that the state is starting to place more and more restrictions on part-time police officers, and that will affect our ability to police the town. Part-time police officers that are certified part-time will no longer be able to make felony arrests, for example. The other issue that he brings up is this money that the state has gotten, the state police task force. I think everybody in Manchester realizes that Manchester is not the biggest town in Vermont, and we all read the paper from the south part of this county, and we all read the Rutland Herald as well. And I have to tell you that it is difficult for Manchester to get the attention of the state task force. There are other communities that are suffering even more than Manchester. So if our strategy for this increasing opiate problem and the crime that relates to it is to wait for the state to solve the issue with this money, I have to tell you that that's a very flawed strategy. It will not happen. That if we want to change the course of what's happening, we need to do something about it. And unfortunately, everything in government costs money. And to add a police officer with all the training and the uniform, the gun, the belt, the handcuffs and everything, that is $75,000. That includes healthcare as well. I do think this is money well spent. So I would ask you to discount or to reject what was said previously and to vote down this amendment. To that, Mr. Moderator, I ask that when a vote be taken, we do it by a standing vote?
A division of the House?
A division of the House, yes, please. I think that this issue is important enough to do that.
Thank you. If you would like to see the vote taken by a division of the House, please stand.
Can't we speak further?
Yes, yes, I'm just, okay, we have enough, we have enough. That's all I needed to know. We will take the vote by a division when the time comes, and you may speak further. Mrs. Dupont has been waiting to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
That's okay. And, and please, please limit your discussion to the first part of the amendment, which is to reduce the $75,000 for the police officer. Thank you.
I find that difficult. I, I find either Manchester has to make up its mind which way it wants to go. If you're having an increase in all your hotels, if you want more people here all the time, you have to expect more crime. And if we're bickering over one policeman, that's ridiculous. And I just want to tell you the experience I've had the last two months, maybe it was a month. We went to bed fairly early. I had someone, I have a very good dog, that's all I'll say. My husband was asleep, and all of a sudden, I heard noises outside. I thought they were children. The voices were high, they were giggling. I know, I think on marijuana, you giggle a little bit. Anyhow, there was a tap on the bedroom window. The house is dark. And I did call the police, and I was told by the dispatcher that they were telling me they were Mormons. This was at 9:15 at night, it was dark. I said, they wanted to know if I wanted a police car sent up, and I said, "No, I thought we had it under control." I called him back the next day, and I said, "Basically, I want you to know..." He wasn't, they weren't knocking, it was two women. They weren't knocking at my front door, they were tapping on my bedroom window. Now, that's, I was a little bit, the dispatcher at the time told me he had had 40 or 50 complaints. So this has happened all over Manchester. I just think these are things you're going to have to be concerned about. I think we certainly, if you only have eight full-time policemen, and you're going to have three hotels in this place, new ones, with more people, you better have more police. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment to reduce by $75,000? Sylvia Jalavet.
I just have a question in regards to the fact that now we have the time between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM where we have no police coverage. With the additional officer would be, would we have more coverage during this period of time?
Who would like to answer that? Mr. O'Keefe?
I don't know, I didn't...
There's a, I would point out to you that the microphones are faced to the rear for a reason, so that you don't get feedback from these speakers, but they're also to remind you that you're supposed to address your questions and comments to the chair. Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To, to our question, the, well, first off, there is a, a period of time when we do not have regularly scheduled police officers. That is not to say that we don't have somebody on duty, though. We do routinely hold people over, and if you look at the budget, you can see an overtime line, and part of that is holding officers over. We don't have a light at town, at the police department that we put on and off when we have people on between those hours, obviously, and it is a little bit of a trade secret when we have those people. This new position would be, would not fill in that gap. This position is dedicated to investigating crimes. Right now, our response time to people's homes are good, as the previous speaker had noticed. What we're struggling with is that it's one thing to send a police officer to someone's home, but it takes a lot of time to solve a crime. One of the examples that I'll use is there was an extremely expensive shotgun that was stolen from a store in the village. I believe it was five figures, the value of the gun. And actually, our police department, actually, one of our part-time officers, Tony Carocchio, put a lot of effort into it, and we were able to solve the crime, but it literally took 40, 50, 60, 70 hours to solve that one crime. Solving crimes takes a long time, and it's important that we get on the trail quickly. When someone's home is broken into, time is of the essence. The longer that you wait to interview witnesses, you know, who here can tell you what, what they had for lunch two days ago? I can't. But if you wait two days to interview someone, and Andy Shaw's back there wondering what he ate, I'm not sure. But the point is, is that you want to get out investigations quickly, and this additional position will allow us to do that. The number one comment I get from people, the number one interest that they have when they're a victim of crime, is they want the police department to do whatever they can to try to solve that crime, whether it's a breaking and entering, whether it's a physical crime, whatever it is. And I think, you know, the one thing I will say is that when I talk to people that call me about the police department, about an investigation that they're having, being a victim of a crime, especially a crime that's in your house, changes your entire perspective on life. And those are the crimes that the police department are focusing the most on. To understand that your house is broken into and to get a sense that the police department is doing everything they can to solve that crime really goes a long ways. Now, it's not to say that every crime can be solved, because it can't, but this position will allow us to do a much better job of trying to solve those crimes, trying to get the, try to get the information that we need to solve it, and also work with our neighboring departments. People are breaking into stuff in Manchester, they're also breaking into stuff in Dorset. So a lot of the discussions are talking to the state police and the Bennington Police Department and the Winthal Police Department, to try to assemble the intelligence needed to decide, to try to solve some of these crimes. So I hope that answers your question, Sylvia.
That's not my question.
Yeah, it was, believe it or not.
You asked about coverage. Ten minutes later, I...
He strayed a bit, he strayed a bit from your question, which was whether or not it would affect the coverage question. Thank you. Lisa Hess.
Couple of questions. Full-time, you talked, somebody talked about having more people in this town with the new hotels coming in. We have to make sure there's people that are going to be in those hotels. You talk about eight full-time police officers. What is the difference of having a new police officer or taking one of those part-timers, making them full-time? You talk about people being broken into. Been there, done that. It's not a good thing. Not have them charged, it's not a good thing. Manchester having eight full-time police officers, we have state troopers on the town, in this, hitting this town all day long. I live on East Manchester Road. Every one of us was robbed a few years back. Nobody got charged. I have a real problem with, with having another full-time police officer. I was under the impression that one of our present police officers was, just went to school to be trained as an investigator. Where's that? Those are my questions.
Do you have anyone in particular you'd like to address your questions to?
If somebody that, the town manager can talk about somebody being trained as of, recently, or Mike Hall?
Thank you. Chief Hall?
Well, Mike, may I make a, answer one of the questions?
Sure.
Lisa, you had a question regarding the staffing aspect of this and whether one of the part-timers can be moved up. The moving pieces, and I hope, Chief, I'm not out of bounds on this, as they're, as they're seen right now, would be, one of the full-time officers would be trained as an investigator, and one of, most likely, one of the part-timers would move up and become a full-timer. So it's, it's, it's taking people in-house and, and some training and some shifting around. And I, I'm not looking for a response on this, I'm just a response to one aspect of the question, and the chief will respond to some of your others.
Thank you. Chief Hall?
Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. In regards to your complaints, that nothing was done, there are many cases that come into the police department that we can't solve for a number of different reasons. One of them in particular, and I won't speak to specifics, but if you choose, I could, is that we don't have the manpower to follow up on. And by the time that we develop information, it may be either too late, or it's too stale to get a search warrant, things of that nature. What I would like to do is address the fact that you have multiple state and other agencies in town. You do, but they are not going to investigate your burglaries, and most likely, they're not going to be investigating drug-related or personal property crime. They may here and arrest, they may be in town, and they may arrest someone for a DUI or for speeding or something like that, but their focus is not criminal interdiction and criminal investigation. That is going to be up to the police department here in Manchester. The only time that that would change would be in the event where we would call upon them for assistance, such as a homicide or a major case, where our manpower and resources just won't allow us to fulfill that obligation. You're correct. Some of these cases aren't being solved. There are people that are unhappy. That's why I went to the select board and asked them to consider adding additional personnel. In the last 25 years, technology has changed a lot. The number of calls and the things that we're dealing with today are much different than they were 10 years ago, and certainly much different than they were 20, 25 years ago. Also, our criminals have changed. Used to be the guys that were committing the burglaries were the 16-year-old kid, they were easy to solve. Now, they're out of Boston, and we find them, as we did with the case of the stolen shotgun that was $65,000. We found them in Miami, Florida. It's no longer a small-town geographic limitations on where we're going and what we're doing. And what I can tell you is that, as someone who grew up here, has worked for this agency for 33 years, I take these things personal. When I have a young person die in this town because of a heroin overdose, I take it personal, because you folks entrust me with protecting you and your children and your family. And I realize that things are difficult. I understand that, and it was not an easy decision to ask for this increase, but when I have good, credible people coming to me with information about drug dealing in this town, that are telling me, "This person is dealing drugs, you need to do something," and I can't do anything about it because I'm too busy down at Price Chopper, dealing with somebody down there that's having a bullying complaint on Facebook, it bothers me. You folks entrust me to protect you with the people that I have and the resources that I have. You can't expect the police department to do what we did today with the same amount of personnel that we had 25 years ago. It's not going to happen. And that's not an ultimatum, that's fact. So with that, my suggestion to you is, we will give you the best level of service that we can with the people that we have, but understand, this decision is yours. We don't have 24-hour coverage. State police doesn't have 24-hour coverage. Nowhere else in the state, with the exception of your major cities, such as Burlington, Rutland, and a few other places, have 24-hour coverage. So what you're seeing here in the state of Vermont and the town of Manchester is not unique. And most people don't realize that, because nobody in, in law enforcement wants to talk about our weaknesses, but today, the way things are, everything's transparent on the table. I know the bad guys know that generally, we don't have someone out between those hours, but we make an attempt, and we do have people out there in those hours at random times, so that they don't know that it's consistent and recurring. And that's something that, you know, I'm not going to stand here and talk about logistics and, and the operations department, because that wouldn't be the appropriate thing to do. But we do the best we can with what we have, and at the end of the day, we only do it with your support. Thank you.
Lisa, you have two minutes and 30 seconds.
I just didn't get an answer also. Did we have a police officer recently go and get trained to be an investigator? And I have one quick question. Ivan, I think it was you that said that it was going to be within, we're taking part-time and make it full-time, and that $75,000, does that decrease some of the other part-time increase in, that's in there, or are we getting another part-timer?
What, I guess the one point to make on part-timers versus full-timers, there's a different level of training. So for a full-timer, you have to go away to the academy, and you have to pass the physical fitness test. For a part-timer, it's less training as well. The part-timers that we have, we have four of them, we wouldn't necessarily be getting another part-timer. The part-timers are based on hours, not on, you know, so each guy isn't guaranteed 10 hours a week. So, but we're having the same number of hours as part-timers. Does that make sense? So we're not actually reducing the number of part-time hours that, that would be spent within the year.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Your name, please?
I'm Jennifer Schmidt. I'm a 10-year resident of Manchester. I currently work in Rutland as a clinical mental health counselor, and I work with children and families in that system, in that town. And I guess I have a question related to, and I think it was partially just answered, but a question related to the training of police staff that would be added. It sounds like from the previous question, that the position being added is purely as an investigator, and I think that was just answered, but I think a lot of, a lot of towns across the country are adding staff to their police department to combat this problem, which is definitely, if it's not, we don't always see it right here in Manchester, it absolutely surrounds us. I see this in my work every single day. And it is crucial to have the police heavily involved with what's going on. And it is crucial to have the police heavily involved with what's going on. I'm just, what I'm seeing is a lot of police departments adding staff who do also have the capacity to deal with families and understand it as a social problem as well, and not just, you know, I think it's important to attack it from the investigator side, but also from a social work perspective as well. So I'm wondering if that is, you know, to be part of the, part of the process, or part of the eventual scheme of how the problem is handled.
Could you, could you try to more concisely state your question?
Oh, sure. So I, I guess, and this may, like I said, this may have just been answered, but is this position being added, is it, is it purely as an investigator-type position, or is there a possibility that either this position, or whoever it might free up on the police staff, will also be, you know, receiving some extra education in how to deal with families, how to, how to support families who are in the, you know, say there's, you have a family where there is both using and dealing going on?
I think I get the gist of the question.
Does that make sense?
Mr. O'Keefe, could you please limit your answer to the question?
Okay. So we are changing the way that we train our police officers. The chief and I have had a lot of different discussions about, police officers are increasingly becoming the first layer of the social service network. So for example, issues of addiction and mental health issues are becoming increasingly identified by our police officers. Most people enter the criminal justice system because of some underlying factor. It's not because, there's very few career criminals out there that just want to steal things. They're usually entering into the system for some other reason. So this position is an investigator, they will get the same kind of training, but that same type of training that I was just talking about. We have increased our training overall, our training budget, and in fact, our lieutenant is a graduate of FBI Academy now, which is the first ever police officer that graduated from that institute. The other thing is that all of the police officers, under the new union contract, it used to be that each year you would move up a step, so you'd get a pay increase. Now there's a much smaller COLA increase, a cost of living increase, for officers that want to be promoted from, say, a police officer to a patrol supervisor, they are required to do additional training above and beyond what is required by the state of Vermont. So a lot of that is domestic violence training, for example. And we've found that there's been a great development in the police department when we've tied promotions to additional training. So I think in some cases, it's 40 to 80 hours of additional training to get to the next level. As you get further into the system, and you get more and more seniority, the additional training is replaced with leadership training, because we're also trying to develop the next level of corporals, sergeants, lieutenants, and chiefs. So there is a lot more training, but a lot of it goes to that new level where police departments are expected to interact a lot more with social service agencies.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, John. That makes a lot of sense, and I would just say that, you know, I think then I would speak in favor of, favor of it, because I think every penny that we put towards this issue comes, you know, it comes, we, it serves us a hundredfold in the end, so, thank you. And thanks to the chief also for your words, because I think it's clear from what you just stated, that the police department has a clear understanding of what they're dealing with, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Ed Morrow.
Ed Morrow.
Sorry.
I wasn't planning to speak on this issue, but now that it's come up and, and been opposed, I didn't think it was going to be. With my 40 years of experience with this select board and the town management, I've been truly impressed by how carefully they watch the pennies that are spent. And I've come to the conclusion, early on, that they're extremely protective of the Manchester taxpayer, and I appreciate that. And looking around at other towns and other administrations, I feel that we're really very well-served by the select board, the town management, and the staff members. You heard the answers that have been given to the questions. It's good that it comes up and is, all is brought to light. I think in, in light of the, of the answers you've heard, oh, one other thing. In recent years, I've been hearing some criticism amongst my acquaintances and friends of the select board for being a little too tight regarding possible support of the town infrastructure that I consider important, that they consider important. And I've always defended the select board and the town management for looking carefully at what they're spending taxpayer dollars on, and I'd really be impressed by that. So in light of all the answers, good answers we've had, I would move that you, I would urge that you all support the inclusion of this amount in the budget, and I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Mr. Morrow moves that debate cease on the question. I'm checking my sheet here. I believe that's a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of ceasing debate on the First Amendment to the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and we have ceased debate on the First Amendment to the budget. Therefore, all those in favor of reducing the budget amount to, by $75,000 to $4,342,188, please say aye.
Aye.
You're right. You're right. I'm sorry. We had already determined previously that this was going to be by a standing vote. So all those in favor of reducing the budget, please stand. And would the justices please count the numbers here? Please report in, if you're a justice, to the head table here. Please report in, if you're a justice, to the head table here.
Are you up for the answer?
I'm up.
Please, until we tell you.
All those opposed to the amendment, please rise. Listen to the results of your vote. Those in favor of the Amendment 25, those opposed, 161, and the amendment fails. I might point out to you all that if you wait until we have the voice vote, you can still request a division at that time. I think the voice vote would have been obvious in this case, but that's hindsight. So just think of it in the future. Thank you. Now, we go on to the Second Amendment to Article 4, which calls for the reduction of $25,000. Mr. Myerson, you may address that.
Thank you. We're being requested for 25, to fund $25,000 for a marketing initiative on top of the $15,000 that we spent last year. And this is just like a feel-good pie-in-the-sky expenditure, which I oppose for many reasons. The most important of which is, we cannot see any tangible benefits. Marketing 101 is, if you're going to be spending money on, any money on marketing, your business or your venture, you got to be able to track where your business is coming from. And we're paying this money, we don't know whether we're getting a benefit or not. When I've spoken to this article in the past, I've said, it ought to be up to the merchants, the largest employers in town, to pay for it. It shouldn't fall to the average taxpayer. It's money that is just being thrown down a hole. We don't know what the return is. I would prefer, although it's not, I'm not making it as a motion, but I may do it next year, why don't we take the $25,000 and take 25 or 50 small businesses in town, give them the money with the proviso that it's going to be used for marketing? That would be a greater overall social benefit than $25,000 for, for marketing that is feel-good pie-in-the-sky, a feel-good pie-in-the-sky appropriation, but we don't know how the money's being used. We don't know how it's going to benefit. We don't know what the benefit is. It is simply something that ought to be the responsibility of the merchants, and not the taxpayers of the town.
Thank you. Bill Drenson.
I'm just looking for some clarification here. Later on, we have a warned article for $25,000 for partnership. Now, are these two separate pots of money, or is this the warned article being rolled over into the budget like it was last year? Selectment says two separate pots of money. Thank you. Now, I do have to take the opportunity ahead to counteract Brad's comments a little bit. We're, this marketing initiative is promoting the town as a whole, and when the town commerce prospers, the town as a whole does. And I think the best tool we have for measuring right, that, that right now, is a substantial increase in our rooms and meals tax, and our sales tax, which far exceeds normal business growth in the state and the nation.
Thank you. Ron Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, as a, kind of a leader of an ad hoc committee that's spearheading this endeavor to co-op work with the town on Marketing Manchester, first of all, I'd like to thank the voters and the select board for continuing to support this marketing effort. Brad's right in that it's very hard to measure direct dollars of marketing and a direct return. Marketing is a sustained effort over a long period of time. But as opposed to suggesting that it belongs merely to the business community to market itself, when Town of Manchester decided to use local option taxes to help defray the cost of its operating budget, the Town of Manchester became a business in itself, relying on the prosperity of the community through its business sources to help defray our costs, which are right now in excess of $1 million a year. That is nothing to be frowned about. And the other point is that last year, in this same discussion with Brad, Bill Drenson brought up a really valuable point, which he underscored today, in that if we are going to sustain the flow of funds from local option taxes, then it does require a sustained investment. The other aspect of Brad's suggestion that the money be given to the small businesses so they can take $500 and invest it in marketing for themselves, is a little bit misguided in two ways. First of all, small amounts of money generate small returns, and cooperative monies generate large returns. The other point about cooperative money is, since the very beginning of this endeavor of using, diverting some of the local option tax money for marketing, was that my commitment to the community was that these would be done on a dollar-per-dollar match basis. As a result, all of the money that we're spending, or have been spent, has been spent, has been matched by the business community dollar-for-dollar. The commitment that I've made personally to the select board and to all of you here is, that we will continue to do that, and we will not spend a dollar of town money unless it's covered by, by a dollar of business money. As far as measurement is concerned, getting back to Brad's point, yes, it's, it's, you know, we're enjoying all of these increases in local option tax revenue that's going to offset our property taxes. And how much of the $15,000 that we spent last year really contributed to that? I would say quite a bit, but I have no facts to give you. So as a result, what we're doing this year is something very different. Last, a couple of years ago, when we started the program, what we suggested, we looked at needing a website, or having a landing process where we could have metrics to apply to the dollars being spent. And we made a conscious decision that you can spend a lot of money developing a website, and maintaining a website, and providing the content for a website, and then what do you do with it? A website- A website by itself is kind of like a store in an alley, and if you don't bring -- put light to it, it doesn't get attention. It's one thing to be enamored by the GoDaddy ads that say, "Build it, and they will come." But that's only a small part of it. Build it, yes, and build a good one, but then you've got to market the hell out of it to get people there. And I can speak from personal experience with our own business, that's exactly what we do. We spend as much money marketing our website for our mail-order business as we -- more than what we do for the store, because that's the direction. As a result, we have not put together -- we just finished a two-year campaign on WAMC Public Radio, an audience of 2-3 million people within a three-hour drive, that I think have contributed to our local option taxes. We decided not to renew that because we decided to look for a platform for metrics. And meeting with some of the young professionals in town over the past summer, trying to come up with a cost-effective way to do that, we were blessed with two young entrepreneurs, Kate Pace of Route 7 Social and Riley Moore of Riley Moore Studios. Both are very young, hip, the future of our community in terms of new business, very hip on social media and also on incredible web design. And they've been able to procure ManchesterVermont.com, and they have gone out and created a self-sustaining website that's being funded by subscription by members of the business community, and it is pure Manchester. It is not a regional approach. It is very much Manchester, which is one of the other charges that the Select Board gave in exchange for putting the money into the budget or allowing it to be considered by the community, was that Manchester taxpayers need to see investment in marketing for Manchester itself. As a result, this ManchesterVermont.com really speaks to that. And if the moderator would allow, I have -- I can show you the site, and what our goal is, is to use our town and business marketing monies through this channel of the town itself to drive eyeballs and drive responses to that site. So that next year, when we're sitting here again, being challenged by the same set of circumstances, I think we'll have metrics through Google Analytics and other things to really demonstrate to not only to you, but to us, that what we're doing is working. And what we can do with the money goes beyond, we can continue to use traditional media like print and radio, but we can also now go into page search. We can also take positions on landing pages like even weather.com and have Manchester Vermont be recognized as a, you know, as a display ad on a whole host of things that we couldn't do before. And it's all with the goal of helping to not only improve the business economy, but improve the revenue stream that we get as -- that we get to enjoy as taxpayers. And, Mr. Moderator, can I step over to the screen?
You have 2 minutes and 42 seconds.
I'd better go faster. Gerald? It's coming. So this is ManchesterVermont.com.
Go ahead.
So ManchesterVermont.com is a very dynamic website. Not only is the photography and the imagery that -- for Manchester pretty spectacular, and this is just the landing page, but what it does is, and I said it's self-sustained, so all of the operation of and creation of this website is not coming out of taxpayer money. It is coming directly from Manchester businesses who choose to subscribe to be on this site. But the site is also -- one of the beauties of the site is that it provides a level playing field for whether you're a small business or a big business. For instance, on this particular page, which is where to stay in Manchester, you've got the Teconic Hotel, you've got the Casablanca Motel right next to the Teconic with no additional -- there's no premium for either one. So it's a site that honors the small business community as well as recognizing the heavy hitters that are in our community or come to it.
You have 12 seconds.
Okay. But, okay, one other point I want to make about it, you can link directly to their sites, but one of the things that we all want to do as a community -- thank you, sir.
Time is up. Thank you.
I'll be happy to respond and show more of these to anyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Morrow.
The point that advertising dollars are going down a hole is a good one, because we're -- everybody who advertises worries about that. When we first went into business, the first advertising person that I talked to, a friend in New York, said it's an axiom within the advertising business that 50% of your advertising is wasted. The genius is the one who can figure out which 50%. I'm pretty well persuaded that what's happened with the $25,000 a year in the past two years with the WAMC advertising has a measure -- had a measurable result, and because we have two stores now, another one in Saratoga Springs within the WAMC listening area, we continue to get an enormous number of comments about hearing the ad, about Manchester in general, not about the North Shore Bookstore, about Manchester. It's a very nice general ad about what we have to offer in Manchester. And many of our shoppers in Saratoga are coming to Manchester as well, and they're reminded to come as this advertising, this marketing hits some 2 million people within driving distance. Very effective. So we feel that it was measurable, not in detail, but we know that it's paying its way. Must -- we must remember that there's a 1% sales tax in this town, we're fortunate in that, and that the more people we attract to town, the more sales tax, the more meals tax, and for those who aren't doing a day trip, the more rooms tax. And so, in effect, it pays for itself. I must say, I'm excited about the new direction and hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Drenson.
Just a couple of comments. This is a wonderful website, Ron, and if it's being promoted and paid for by local businesses, why do we also need the $25,000? In particular, since we're also supposed to be voting for $25,000 to, I'm assuming it's the Chamber of Commerce group that are trying to also attract people to this area. I realize that it's not right here in Manchester, but most of it will be a Manchester destination type of advertising, I'm assuming. The other comment I have to make is, our roads and sidewalks are a disgrace, and it's only a matter of time before some person who is visiting this town trips on the sidewalk and breaks a leg or an arm and sues us. To my mind, the money, the $25,000, and probably the $75,000 should be going towards our roads and our sidewalks. I think that is a better way of spending our taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. No, there was no question. Is there anyone else that would like to address the amendment to the budget to reduce the amount asked for?
I make a motion to remove the question.
Well, I'm going to hold off on that because I think we're going to get to that point without having to vote to do it. The question before us is the Second Amendment to the budget, which would reduce the amount asked for to $4,392,188. Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor of the amendment to reduce the amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it.
I want a standing vote.
Okay, Mr. Cole requests a standing vote. Are there seven people who join in that request? Yes, there are, so we're going to take this vote by a standing division. If the justices, please be ready. All those in favor of the amendment to reduce the budget by $25,000, please stand.
Brad, are you standing?
I'd remind you again, if you want to be counted, you need to be in the chairs on the floor. All those opposed to the motion, please rise and remain standing. Okay, you may take your seats. Listen to those -- listen to the results of your vote. Those in favor of the amendment to reduce spending by $25,054, those opposed 116, and the amendment is defeated. We're back to the main question now on Article 4. Shall the town appropriate $4,417,188 to defray the operating expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less the anticipated non-property tax revenue, plus any voted appropriations? Are you ready for that question? Yes?
I have a question. My name is Louise Riviaccio, and I have a question as to whether or not that's enough operating expense. In particular, does -- maybe I should back this up a little bit. I have noted that especially in the Prospect area, the whole street of Prospect, not one single fire hydrant is in service. Every single one is out of service. So I'm wondering if there is some accommodation to getting those fire hydrants in service, and if so, where is it? Is it in operating? It looks like it could be in that $50,000.
I think I can answer your question, which is it's in the water department budget, which we're not voting today. That's voted by the water commissioners, appointed by the Select Board.
I'm sorry?
The water commissioners are reported but -- are appointed by the Select Board, and the budget for running the water system is not included in the town operating budget.
Okay. So where is it included?
Yeah. If you'd like to speak to the town manager or the chairman of the Board of Water Commissioners, who sits on my left over here, after the meeting, we'd be glad to discuss it, but it's really not relevant to the operating budget today.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, then, on the question?
That doesn't include the police management line item there, which I'd like to talk about also. So, I'm a little concerned. This is just one example. There's other departments that went over budget, and I can understand the Department of Public Works last year because of the snow and all the implement weather we had. I'm just wondering if there's any vehicle for these departments to keep their budgets below what are their actual spendings, below their budgets. If we did, we'd probably have a surplus of money left over instead of a deficit. The other thing that I had a concern about with the police department is the police management fund. According to this, there was a budget of $203,075 for 2014-15, of which we spent nothing this year. I went back in the last five town reports, and there was always money allocated to this budget, but of the last five years, only $10,680 has been spent out of a total of $676,000 that were allocated for this line item. I'm wondering why this line item even exists. It originally was set up for a police chief salary back in the 2010-2011 budget year. And there's $600,000 that is used probably for slushing around the other departments that are over budget. And I'm just wondering why this even exists.
Okay. Mr. Beatty.
Thank you for those questions and comments. It is confusing and it's difficult to follow at times because on many of the items you mentioned, there's an offsetting revenue that shows up on the revenue side. For instance, in the police department, where it appears that we overspent the budget, doesn't appear that we overspent it. We overspent the budget by $90,000. There's an offsetting revenue, which was a state grant for a console system. So, it was a net, it netted out for the town's benefit. In the fiscal year to which you are referring, 2014-2015, we ended the year with a $172,000 surplus. In my experience with the town, we have never ended the year in a deficit position, nor will we ever, as long as I sit here, and I've been here 33 years, in this position. Relative to some of the other items you mentioned, for instance, when we have a hard winter, like we did last year, and the salt and sand is over budget by over $100,000, we draw down, we get together, we talk to various department heads and say, "We've got to cover this. People need us to salt and sand the roads and plow the sidewalks and plow the roads. Where are we going to cut?" And we cut other departments in order to accommodate that. Relative to salaries, we moved salaries out of the individual departments and put them in one place in the budget so that people could find them easily. That causes confusion. As long as any of those entries exist in the past years and now show up as zero, but you will notice when that year goes off the chart, numbers will be consistent going forward. The numbers are there. We are audited every year, and we always pass with the highest level relative to the audit, from an outside auditor. And I'd like to answer, I don't know if I missed some of your comments, but I'd be happy to address them.
I'm just concerned that there's so many line items. I almost ran out of highlighter with all the overruns on budgets. And it just doesn't make any sense. When I worked in manufacturing, we had the whole door budgets. I mean, there are excuses, and there should be oversight, and people should be saying, "Okay, why are we over?" But it's ridiculous what I'm seeing here, really. It's unbelievable to me. That's all I want to say.
I don't want to get back and forth to get going here, but if I might respond.
No, there's not a question pending. So, if there's...
I did have a question as to why that one line item exists when we don't, never spend any money in it. It's just about...
The $10,000 item for police management?
You can answer again. The thing is, it's a question.
We haven't spent any money in five years on it. The money keeps getting bigger and bigger.
Can I?
Do you have a question in mind?
Yeah. So, if you go to page 18, there's a line item there about halfway down the page that says Police Department Management. It's a tool that I use for budgeting. That includes the salary of the police chief, lieutenant, and the regular time, but not overtime, associated with the director of emergency communications, which is the chief dispatcher, Bob Madison. We break it out because those departments, those positions are non-union positions. So, with that comes different benefits. For example, those people are subject to the town's personnel handbook. When it comes to payroll, though, we just pay them all out of the line below that. You can see here it's 251020. You see that's over by a corresponding amount. So, it's more of a budgeting tool for me that I use, the Police Department Management, and that's the chief, the lieutenant, and the chief dispatcher. But when it comes down to payroll, which Ruth and a couple other people in my office do, they charge it all to the same account. So, I hope that answers the question.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Williams?
I don't even know if we're talking about the same thing. I'm talking about 2510-10, Police Management, Police Department, which has 203,500 this year and 211,000 next year. In the last five years, we spent a total of $10,680 out of that line item, out of $676,000 that were put into the budget.
So, the question has to do with the discrepancy between the amount budgeted and the amount actually spent. I think I heard your answer before, is that you really need to combine it with the line below there, that some of those expenses got picked up in the lower line?
And then, if you could see, the other one that is used as dispatcher full-time was about a less than $50,000 over budget, and that's what the chief dispatcher is charged to as well. So, I stand by my answer that I understand his question, but you don't have to look very far to see the answer, that you just have to go down one line.
Okay.
And a couple lines thereafter.
Thank you. You've answered the question. Sylvia Jalavet?
In reference to this discussion, I just want to say it's the format that is used that's difficult to follow, but that's the format that the select board chooses and the town manager chooses. It's sort of baffling sometimes for an average individual to take a quick look and try to make an assessment of what's there. But, hey, you know, different strokes for different folks. That's all I can say.
I'm sure the board and the manager will take your comments under consideration next year. Ed Morrow?
I guess I have to sympathize with the two previous speakers. I understand the budget. I examine it, and I see the answers that you've given, and I can figure it out, but it does take some active pencil work. And I think it would be good if you could consider developing a format for the report to the townspeople that would be more intelligible, that would at least have footnotes at the bottom of columns that seem confusing. You yourselves have commented that it seemed confusing, and you come up with the answers. Maybe there's a way to present the figures where the answers would be readily apparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article Four who hasn't already spoken? If not, Mr. O'Keefe?
I agree with Ed's point. I guess one thing I would say, it's the only thing worse than reading the budget is putting it together. Here is the, that is actually your town budget. That's all the notes that you have in there. So, when we talk about health care, you know, there's charts in here that show all the different health care. I do labor over, and I think the board does too, what's the appropriate way to report the numbers to town meeting, making it as easy for people to understand it. And I guess as part of some self-criticism, I guess maybe I haven't found the best way to do it. The budgeting process has not gotten, since I've come here, it's not gotten easier. It's gotten more difficult to unravel, and I think that's kind of what Ed's getting to. I think there used to be simpler times, and you don't have to travel very far. I know that one select board member from Land Grove showed me his budget and said, "Well, you know, where can we cut some stuff?" And it took about 15, no, not 15, five minutes to go through it. They had the highway department, they had some money for sand, they had some money for diesel. I don't even think they even had a health care budget, because I don't think they had a full-time employee. Our budget process is really complicated, and I apologize for that. What we've tried to do through a more complicated budget process, which evolves over two years. So, right now, we've got a draft budget for next year that's already been put into the system. What we're trying to do is avoid over-budgeting, and it involves a lot more analysis so that when we look at, for example, gasoline budgets for the different departments, we're finding that we're becoming more accurate. One year, actually, I pointed out to Fred Westner, we went back and forth arguing over what would be the right number. We were $7 off on a $16,000 budget on gasoline, $7 under budget. So, with gasoline, for example, we look at numbers from the federal government, because they're always right, and they tell us what they think the price of gasoline will be a year from now. Then we look at how much, how many units do we use? That's gallons. And then we add some contingency to it. But each year, we're grinding out a new number, every single year, on gasoline. You'll see in the budget, this year, I totally got it wrong. I did not foresee a huge drop in gasoline prices, I have to admit. So, in the current fiscal year, you're going to see a lot of accounts that are, at this current stage, we're looking at some budgets that are going to be way, way, way under budget. I think we spent 30% of the heating budget for town hall, for example, so far. But what we're trying to do is get more accurate numbers so that we're not just adding 3% or 5% every year. And I think that's the temptation in town government, is everything either gets a certain number slapped onto the top. And what we saw was that we were over-budgeting in a lot of different accounts. Last year, in the report, right now, our auditors are tracking an $18,000 surplus overall. The year before that, $170,000 surplus. And in the current year, I'm not even going to take a guess. Every time I do, Jeff Williams gets mad at me because he tells me that winter's not over yet. Apparently, he's got a groundhog in his backyard. But right now, with sand and salt, I think we're $90,000 under budget for salt, for example. Right now, for the current fiscal year, we're looking at a big surplus. So, like Ivan was saying, you know, we do look at all the different things, but some people do go over budget. And that's when, in the previous year, we had a large discussion at the select board meeting the other night, the fire department volunteered to spend a lot less money than they were appropriated, $20,000, because Grubb, who also plows, as you know, he recognized that Jeff was going to be way over budget. So, you know, looking at the whole thing, there are some departments that go over, but we keep a very careful eye on those, and we work with all the department heads, who are very selfless when it comes to looking at their numbers and saying, "You know what? This year is not my year." And last year, people recognized it. Last year was Jeff Williams' year. He was Employee of the Year. This year, not so much. So, I hope that's kind of a longer discussion on the budget than people expected, but I do apologize that it's gotten more and more complicated.
It sounds like we have some people who are interested in trying to make it more intelligible, and that the administration recognizes that this is not always as intelligible as it might be, and there may be a different way of presenting the information or presenting additional information that would be helpful. Sylvia?
I just want to bring everyone's attention to page 12, and the great job that the police department has done in getting all these grants. If you'll look in the first section under Police Department, and the last four items, 15, 15, 14, and 14 down there, where it says Vermont Grants, Dispatch Console, HSU Grant, Cruiser Tablets, DUI Grants, et cetera, and, you know, there's over $108,000 there that they got in grants, and I think that's something that we should praise and respect. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to discuss Article Four? If not, the question is, shall we appropriate 4,417,188 dollars to defray the operating expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less the anticipated non-property tax revenue, plus any voted appropriations? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Four has been approved. Article Five is, shall the town appropriate $554,500 to defray the capital expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less anticipated capital-related non-property tax revenue? Is there a motion on Article Five? Moved by Bill Drunzig, seconded by Sylvia Jalavet. Ivan Beatty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to thank everyone for their thoughtful input on the budget discussion. I think maybe we did a better job this year because we got more questions. And I always wonder, when I make a long-winded presentation and we get no questions, that I, people are just so overwhelmed by the numbers that they don't know what to ask. They were all good questions, every single one of them. It was good discussion on the increases, and it was not dissimilar from the discussion that we had at the board level relative to all those items. So, I'm always impressed by the collective wisdom of the voters, and we work hard to, and we're taxpayers too. We don't make a lot of money in this position, from the position. So, the only benefit to us is to try to keep taxes low. Having said that, I'd like to get to Article Five, and I'm going to keep it well within my allotted time, Mr. Moderator. This is the, I mentioned the five parts of the budget before, oversimplifying. This is the capital expense side. The relative to comments that were made earlier, this is where the paving, the sidewalks, the big repairs, capital expenditures, all reside. The roads are a mess, I agree. The sidewalks are, we're doing our best with the sidewalk.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss Article Four? If not, the question is, shall we appropriate $4,417,188 to defray the operating expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less anticipated non-property tax revenue, plus any voted appropriations? All the, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Four has been approved. Article Five is, shall the town appropriate $554,500 to defray the capital expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less anticipated capital-related non-property tax revenue? Is there a motion on Article Five? Moved by Bill Drunzig, seconded by Sylvia Jalavet. Ivan Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to thank everyone for their thoughtful input on the budget discussion. I think maybe we did a better job this year, because we got more questions. And I always wonder, when I make a long-winded presentation and we get no questions, that I, people are just so overwhelmed by the numbers that they don't know what to ask. They were all good questions, every single one of them. It was good discussion on the increases, and it was not dissimilar from the discussion that we had at the Board level relative to all those items. So I'm always impressed by the collective wisdom of the voters, and we work hard to, and we're taxpayers, too. We don't make a lot of money in this position, from the position. So the only benefit to us is to try to keep taxes low. Having said that, I'd like to get to Article Five, and I'm going to keep it well within my allotted time, Mr. Moderator. This is the, I mentioned the five parts of the budget before, oversimplifying. This is the capital expense side. The relative to comments that were made earlier, this is where the paving, the sidewalks, the big repairs, capital expenditures, all reside. The roads are a mess, I agree. The sidewalks are, we're doing our best with the sidewalks. We're trying not to add new sidewalks, because we need to take care of the sidewalks we have. We need to take care of the roads that we have. We need to replace the vehicles that are maybe 15 or more years old. It all needs to happen. If we don't do it this year, it's going to be a year longer, and we're going to have to do it next year. So we have a six-year capital plan, where we try to jockey the numbers, so there's no huge increases in any one year. Having said that, there were huge increases this year. We removed some items, and the items that remain in this budget are paving of Center Hill Road, Spruce Street, and a mile of Richville Road, $186,000. There's a local match to a larger project to replace a large culvert on Richville Road. Our match of that is $14,000. That shows up in the, in the capital budget. The replacement of the roof at Town Hall is $60,000. Paving of the access road and parking lot at Town Hall is $40,000. I personally tried to cut this one. This is page 19 of your, of your budget, of your Part A of Town Report. I'm sorry for not offering that. I was informed that we've had several incidents relative to the condition of the asphalt in the town parking lot, and it's probably time to do that. It's going to have to be done at some point. Now seems to be the time. So that's the paving at Town Hall, $40,000. Every year, we do a contribution to the Police Vehicle Reserve Fund of $30,000. That's their contribution to the Fire Department Equipment Reserve Fund. It's an amount totaling $90,000, $30,000 for equipment, and $60,000 for vehicle. Work truck for the Department of Public Works, and I can give you details on any of these, $60,000. And the first payment on a lease purchase agreement for a new loader for the Department of Public Works, $38,000. We need another commercial lawnmower for the DPW, who does all of our lawn mowing. Now, we don't contract any of that out. That's $13,500. The first year of a five-year plan to help preserve town historic records. We're one of the only towns in Vermont that has our land grant records from the original 1761, excuse me, yeah, 1761 creation of the town, all the way to today. Historically, those have been kept in houses or places where the town clerk was. Ours are intact. They're old. They need to be preserved. I think it's an important project. This is a five-year project. This will be the first year. We stretched it out a little bit farther to try to reduce the amount we were putting in this year. They've lasted 250 years. I think we'll make it, the five that it's going to take to do this. And then, of course, there's a replacement of the lighting at the public safety facility for $5,000, but the payback on that is very, very quick. How long? Two and a half years, actually, in savings will pay back the investment. Plus, we'll be using less energy to do it. So that's the capital. Article Five, capital budget, in a nutshell. Hopefully, you'll agree that these things need to be addressed. I leave it up to you.
Thank you. Anyone like to address Article Five? If not, the question is, shall, shall the town appropriate $554,500 to defray the capital expenses of the town for the ensuing year, less anticipated capital-related non-property tax revenue? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Five has been approved. Article Six, shall the town transfer all fiscal year 2017 local option tax revenues in excess of $1,170,000 into the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund, provided that in the case of a deficiency in local option tax revenues, funds from the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund may be used to offset the deficit, provided further that the amount transferred from the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund to the General Fund in fiscal year 2017 local option tax revenues shall not exceed a total of $1,170,000. Steve Nichols makes that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Bill Drunzig. And Stephen, you may address this article.
Thank you. This article does one of two things, depending on circumstances. Authorizes the transfer of local option sales, meals, alcohol, and rooms tax revenues greater than $1,170,000 from the General Fund to the Taxpayer Relief Reserve Fund. For the last several years, this has not happened, but the economy and revenues are on the upswing. Two, authorizes a transfer from the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund to the General Fund in the case that the town does not collect $1,170,000 in local option tax in fiscal year 2016. Over the last several years, the town's local option tax revenues have increased. Year 13, $975,753. Fiscal year 14, $1,024,984. Fiscal year 15, $1,68365. Between fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 15, local option revenues increased almost 10%. And looking ahead, fiscal year 2016 appear to be stronger than fiscal year 13, 14, or 15. The town only transfers the funds needed to balance the budget typically less than the budgeted amount. The fiscal year 2017 budget includes $10,000 from the Property Tax Reserve Fund. The Select Board has been slowly reducing the use of this fund to preserve the fund, and at the time, provide for a smooth transition as it relates to the tax rate. Use of this fund and local option taxes in general is one of the main reasons Manchester has one of the lowest tax rates in Vermont. As of June 30, 2015, the balance of this fund is $370,722.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on this article? Okay. The question is, shall the town transfer all fiscal year 2017 local option tax revenues in excess of $1,170,000 into the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund, provided that in the case of a deficiency in local option tax revenues, funds from the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund may be used to offset the deficit, provided further that the amount transferred from the Property Tax Relief Reserve Fund to the General Fund in fiscal year 2017 local option tax revenues shall not exceed a total of $1,170,000? All those in favor of that question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Six has been approved. Article Seven, shall the town appropriate a total of $15,981 to the following human services, human service organizations pursuant to 24 VSA 2691 and 2692? Number one, $420 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Number two, $500 to the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. Number three, $1,000 to the Collaborative. Number four, $1,500 to Neighbor to Neighbor. Number five, $1,811 to Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Number six, $1,850 to Project Against Violent Encounters. Number seven, $2,000 to the Center for Restorative Justice. Number eight, $2,000 to Greater Northshire Access Television. Number nine, $2,400 to Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity. And number 10, $2,500 to the Tutorial Center. Are you, is there a motion on that? Michael Powers makes the motion, seconded by Ed Morrow. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann St. John. I'd like to say a few words on behalf of Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So Brock serves your town every year with regard to fuel assistance, electric assistance, housing, and many other basic needs. As you'll see in your, one of your brochures, we served 132 individuals last year for various kinds of assistance. Two homeless families were housed. Two homes consisting of six individuals were weatherized, reducing energy costs. Three residents received technical assistance in support of fulfilling their dream of starting a small business through our micro-business development program. It's been a good year in terms of fuel assistance. Obviously, prices have been low, and so we've not seen the demand that we normally do see this time of year. However, the recent long weekend with really frigid temperatures caused a lot of folks to come in for fuel assistance in addition to furnace repairs and replacements, and we're happy to provide assistance with those. While we've not seen the demand we normally see for fuel, we have seen increased demand for electric assistance. And often, the electric does run the furnace, so the net result is the same. If people get an electric shut-off, they don't have heat. We also see a lot of people coming in for food assistance, because the price of food, of course, has gone up fairly dramatically, even though other prices for gasoline and fuel, for example, have dropped. So I'd like to just also note that we're providing free tax assistance currently to folks who come in, and also that we have a navigator to help with assistance for Vermont Health Connect. So we thank you for your past support, and we'd like to encourage you to vote in favor of our request of $1,811 this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address any of these amounts? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Soulsby, and I'm here before you today as a Manchester resident and the community outreach specialist at the Collaborative. We appreciate your favorable support at last year's Town Meeting, and ask the residents here today to vote in favor of the Collaborative's request of $1,000. The Collaborative is a youth substance use prevention nonprofit organization serving Manchester and the greater community towns. Our efforts support healthy communities and substance-free youth. Prevention is a multi-pronged approach using education, programming, and policy work, reaching out to and working with youth, parents, caring adults, community members, businesses, towns, and organizations. Our work in Manchester includes, but is not limited to, Refuse to Use at MEMS and VBA, two of the 10 schools where the program is offered, substance-free events for young people, including nine Brumball events for high school students, and 10 skate nights for high school and middle school youth and families at Riley Rink, Department of Liquor Control trainings for servers and sellers of alcohol and tobacco products, and the establishment and promotion of a prescription drug collection box at Manchester Police Department to decrease access by non-prescribed users. In closing, thank you for your past support, and thank you in advance for supporting the Collaborative again this year.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article Seven? Come right up to the microphone, please.
Hi there. My name is Tammy Riley. I'm the Executive Director at Greater Northshire Access Television. Thank you for your past support. As many of you know, we broadcast on Comcast Channels 15, 16, and 17. We also provide all of our local content on our website, gnat.tv. We provide a direct service to the citizens of Manchester by covering Town Meetings, Select Board Meetings, Planning Meetings, School Board Meetings, and other special events as needed throughout the year. We also offer training, equipment, and other services to nonprofits and community members. And we are asking for $2,000 to help offset the costs for the videography. We would love to rely on volunteers to cover all the meetings, but that's not a reality in 2016. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sylvia Jalavet.
I have a question in regards to why Articles 12 and 13 are not included in Article Seven here.
Okay.
That's asking for Australian ballot votes for those two organizations, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging. Why aren't they included in Seven?
I believe I know the answer, which is, last, two years ago, at Town Meeting, we voted that all appropriations for social service agencies in excess of $2,500 would be voted by Australian ballot.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Monica Noor. I'm a resident of Manchester, and I'm President of the Board of Directors of the Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity. I want to begin by thanking this community for a decade of support for our effort to develop the community on Jennifer Lane. We will, again, next year, be building a house on Jennifer Lane in addition to the work we are now sort of renewing in, in the Southshire. We appreciate your support and our ability to help the community achieve its affordable housing goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this article? If not, the question is, shall the town appropriate a total of $15,981 for the following human service organizations pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2691 and 2692? Number one is $420 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Number two is $500 to the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. Number three is $1,000 to the Collaborative. Number four is $1,500 to Neighbor to Neighbor. Number five is $1,811 to Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Number six is $1,850 to the Project to Advance Violent Encounters, Project Against Violent Encounters, excuse me. Number seven is $2,000 to the Center for Restorative Justice. Number eight is $2,000 to Greater Northshire Access Television. Number nine is $2,400 to Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity. And number 10 is $2,500 to the Tutorial Center. All those in favor of that article, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Seven has been approved. Article Eight, shall the town support making certain improvements to Depot Street Corridor and authorize the use of up to $60,000 from the Capital Improvement Reserve and Contingency Fund to provide the required 10% match of funds from the State of Vermont Bicycle and Pedestrian Program, as well as the temporary use of CIRC funds necessary to pay reimbursable expenses? Is there a motion on that question? Mr. O'Keefe, seconded, Ed Morrow. You may address it. John.
Hello. I'm going to try to do something I haven't done today, which is be short and concise. I know you're thinking, "Oh, it's him again." I guess I'll start real quick with just a story that, my family and I moved here in 2007, in January. And the project that we're talking about was on the books, if anyone has been involved in town government up to this point. The Roundabout was on the books, and we'd always talked about doing Depot Street after the Roundabout project. With the success that we had in the Roundabout project, we decided right after that that we'd go after Depot Street. So Pauline Moore, who's not here today, and Janet Hurley, put together a planning grant in order to do a scoping study. And the scoping study had some interesting pieces, and I think when we finally looked at the details of it, some of those points weren't supported. It's actually, the interesting thing is, the original proposal actually had more cost going into tree, planting trees than pavement, which isn't a bad thing, but I've never seen that before. The other thing that it had was it had an elevated curbing all the way down the middle of Depot Street, except for some turning opportunities. And I think that is something that has plagued this project in talking to the public, is most people assume that they'll be curbing about seven or eight inches down the middle of the road with landscaping there. We didn't back off of that recommendation easily. We had talked to Jeff Williams. We had talked to Jeff Williams at the DPW Department, and also our illustrious Chief of Fire, Greg Born, who both came out and said that the curbing down the middle of the road wasn't as practical, that it would make maintenance difficult, and would also make emergency vehicles difficult to respond. So from there, we put in a grant with the state for what's called a pedestrian bicycle grant, for a number that's much larger than we're talking about right now. But we were approved for $580,000. And of that $580,000, we would be responsible for 10% of it. What makes this unique is that the $580,000 involves design and construction. I think everybody is aware of all these projects that have been designed over the history of time and never have funding to actually do them. So I think the State of Vermont finally got the message that if they're going to pay for design, they should also be paying for construction. So right now, we have $580,000 waiting for us. That includes our 10%. This article authorizes $60,000, which would be a little bit more than our 10% share. What the project is, at this point, is replacement of some sidewalks on Depot Street, not all of them, but the ones that need to be replaced. Within the 40-foot right-of-way, well, actually, within the 40 feet between the two pieces of curbing, we would be fitting in a bike lane on each side of the road, a travelway, and then in many spots, a turning lane. Right now, we have a turning lane all the way down the middle of the road, and it is not used that much. Landscaping, new benches, new bike racks, and also, in order to support a more lively evening atmosphere in Manchester, would also include streetlights similar to what we put into the Town Green or similar to what's in the Roundabout project. So you have the standalone lighting that's much more effective. Right now, the Depot Street lighting is really held hostage to where Green Mountain Power has telephone poles. That's really the lighting plan on Depot Street, is wherever there's a pole. And it would also involve sewer, not within this money, but also in the project from the Sewer Department, would involve sewer from Cottage down to basically Manchester Woodcrafter. So the $60,000 that we're asking for your support would mean an entire redoing of Depot Street from Cottage Street to Center Hill. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Ms. Hess.
I would like to know what kind of study you've done for bicycles on Depot Street. A few years ago, we decided that we needed to have three lanes on Depot Street. Works perfect with our Roundabout. One thing that Manchester, as you, the town manager, and some other people have to remember is that we have to travel in and out of this town as residents, and that Depot Street, three lanes, with the Roundabout, was wonderful. When you start taking away that third lane, we don't always get around easily when we have lead peakers or our snow bunnies here. And we support this town year-round, the people that live here. And taking away that middle lane or adding a bike route, I'd like to know what kind of study you did for bicycles on 11 and 30.
Okay. Mr. O'Keefe.
I think the main point of your question is the center lane. So we're actually not proposing to do away with the center lane. We're still going to have turning opportunities in there, for example, at the Price Chopper Plaza, Riverside Heights, at Center Hill. So we're not actually proposing to eliminate it. What we're proposing is, in many areas, in order to break up the monotony of the pavement, is there would be something similar to the mini Roundabout that's in front of the bookstore. So you actually would be able to drive over the top of it. But we're actually not proposing the elimination of the center lane totally.
Okay. What about the bicycles? What kind of study have you done for bicycles?
I'm a little confused on the question, Mr. Moderator.
You want to put a bicycle lane in on Depot Street? So what's the study saying that we need the bicycle lane on Depot Street?
The genesis of the bicycle lane actually comes from town. During the Manchester 2020 process, there were four priorities identified. I won't go through them all, but making Manchester a bicycle-friendly community is one of those big goals. So, you know, the whole point of this entire project actually comes from the whole process that we had three or four years ago. But we don't really have any study as far as... just like we don't have any study of traffic flows either on Depot Street. So I guess the question that you're asking is kind of a red herring, because I'm not aware that there would actually be a study of bicycles on a road, especially one that doesn't even exist, the bicycle lanes themselves.
Well, putting a bi... I'm confused, because you're saying you're putting a bicycle lane in, and you've done no study to prove that we need the bicycle lane in. I just want... you would... if people are riding bicycles in Manchester, whether there's a bicycle lane or not, they're going to ride the bicycle. On Richville Road, we see bicycles, not very often on a Depot Street. The other thing I'd ask is, in that proposal of Depot Street, what is the plan for the lights at the bottom of Center Hill? Was there a discussion on that, or was there... I heard it through the grapevine, a Roundabout there?
No.
Okay. Then my other question is that we...
Oh, I'm not supposed to... shaking my head doesn't mean an answer, though.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, could I answer that?
Yes, she may.
Well, actually, I will go back to a little personal history. A couple of years ago, I decided I would get in shape, and one thing I decided I would do is ride my bike to work. Most of you thought I'd gotten a DUI, which is kind of interesting. So I guess that's kind of the feeling that people have, is the minute that you get on a bike, people think that you've had your license suspended. I will tell you that my experience was that I did not find Depot Street... I came down East Manchester to Richville. I was originally going up Center Hill, but given the lack of fitness, I found Center Hill daunting, so I decided I would go up Depot Street. I didn't find Depot Street particularly safe as far as a bicyclist, so I will say that. The Roundabout at Center Hill is a bad rumor. I would like to, and we don't have it in this project, I would like to replace the lights with better technology. Right now, the technology in the road is... there are sensors that every time we have to dig there, it's a nightmare. There's better sensors. Actually, most people think the sensors up there are cameras on traffic lights. In most cases, they are not cameras. They're sensors that allow for better technology to actually be a little smarter down there. What I'd like to do with a state grant is replace the lights that are there, that are on the galvanized poles with the cable strung across there. I'd like to replace it with something that's a little bit more context-sensitive, that actually matches Manchester's look, something a little bit more 1940s, 50s look, with an arm, and then an arm that comes over and the light hanging off the pole. But I don't think we have any plans of putting a Roundabout in.
You still have six minutes.
None of my answer... you know, I'm not getting the answer that I wanted, when as far as the research on this. And the other thing is, I'd ask that you're talking about replacing lights, and I would suggest that the town of Manchester look into the lights at the bottom of Richville Road, at the end of Richville Road, and the ones across the road, the shortcut that goes to Elm Street, because if you're in the straight line across, it does not change either way. And the timing on those lights is way off, because you come out of Richville Road, you got to stop at the bottom of Elm... Center Hill. There's no... and turning the lights off when it's busy in town doesn't help the people that are coming off Richville Road either.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I'll offer a couple, just because...
I don't think there's a question.
Well, I just offer my observation.
Well, we have other people waiting.
Okay. Sorry.
Sylvia.
I'll be brief. In reference to this particular article, I am totally against this expenditure of $60,000, just because we've got a grant coming in of $520,000. Now, I wrote an article some time ago in reference to this, and probably many of you read it, so I'm not going to go into detail, but I think this is wasteful spending, and I just think Depot Street works well the way it is, so it's not broken. Leave it as is.
Thank you. Mr. Cole.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I understand that we're supposed to be speaking to you, but the people we're trying to convince of our way of thinking is behind me. So that's the reason I see a lot of people turning around and trying to convince...
I appreciate that.
Okay. I'm against this Depot Street one. You got Wendy's Way. I don't see you putting any side roads up through there or bicycle paths for them to use. What's wrong there? We got the North Road. They're in the road, they're not in a bicycle path. So, yes.
Yes, you may.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that was clear.
I understand your question, and I understand people's frustration with this, and I will answer your question directly, but we need to think a little bit about the stretch of highway that we're talking about. That was actually built before New Route 7 was finished to Manchester, but it was built in anticipation of that being the entrance to town. That was a state highway all the way to the intersection. The State of Vermont designed the three-lane thoroughfare that we have now, and then gave it to the town, saying, "We've done our part, we don't want to hear from you again on this." That was 1984. I was on the board. There was... it seemed like a nice highway, but the world has changed since then, and that highway is not dissimilar from what you'll see going into Rutland, some of the other larger cities... we don't have any large cities, I guess, but certainly South Burlington. It caters to the automobile, which was the intent, but planning has changed a lot in the 30 years since then, and there's a lot more consideration given to the pedestrian and the feel of a community. And if I'm in my car and I want to get through there, I agree with Sylvia, it works pretty well. If I'm in a wheelchair, or I have a baby in a stroller, and I want to get across that with two lanes of traffic and a third lane that you don't know which direction the cars are coming from, and you got to get across all three of them at the same time, there's a real problem. And that is going to continue to infill with more and more activity as the community develops. And the problem is, it's a suburban strip in a town center, and it just doesn't work. So the whole impetus that precipitated this discussion 12, 15 years ago was, how do we get people safely across that? Is it the best highway that we can have in the middle of town? And that was when we started looking at trying to create some sort of islands in the middle of that long suicide lane in the middle, where people are going in both directions, where a pedestrian can go across one lane, stand in the middle, take a deep breath, and then get across the other lane. The other problem is, the lanes are 14 feet wide. That's the same width as an interstate highway. It encourages speeding, and people will travel a road at the rate that they feel comfortable. There are a lot of drawbacks to that road from everything other than moving cars in the center of town. So that was kind of how we looked at it. We've gone through a number of renditions on this, and in the interim, the 2020 study came in, a lot of you participated in that. One of the top four goals for the town was to try to find better ways to make the community Manchester-friendly, and there's been a lot of participation in that, including public referendums and studies. This was identified as one of the areas. To answer Lisa's question, we haven't spent money on other studies. It takes money to do that, and not everything needs to have a study. The actual study of this will come through the design aspect, which, even though John mentioned that's a good way to do it, to combine design with construction, you can't design something until you have the money in hand, you have to identify the need. So the needs, from my perspective, were threefold. Create a safe environment for pedestrians to get across that road. Accommodate bicycles, and do it in an aesthetically pleasing manner. These three goals are being met by this project, or will be met by the ultimate design of this project. Relative to your question about Wendy's Way on the rural backroads, we don't have sidewalks up there either. It's a rural backroad. There are shoulders available, but it's a whole different dynamic. It's not a major arterial right in the middle of town. I hope that answers your question, right?
No, not really, but... point-blank, I'm against it. We've got the sidewalks. Yes, there is just three crosswalks. All right. But with the amount of curb cuts that you have en route on Depot Street, there's no way I can see this thing working, even if they're only four inches out of the highway.
No curbing in the highway. This will not have any curb curbing in the center lane of the highway. That's not what we're talking about anymore. Snowplows will be able to travel right over it, and emergency vehicle can go right down the middle of the highway. What we're looking at is stamped sidewalks with stamped areas, much like you see around the Roundabout, only without the raised portion for pedestrian travel, and marked as such. We can argue about whether or not it's as effective as curbing, but the curbing idea was shot down for the very reasons that you have stated.
Yeah. Well, that's just not the way, I guess, I'm understanding it. You're telling me that it's going to be things in this center lane? They got to be raised up, right? No? Then... too close?
No. It's just painted.
They're painted? Ah. So what's the matter? We're just painting some more crosswalks in then? And you've already put a bicycle...
I hope people understood what I was saying.
There is not a pending question, so I'm going to cut you off.
Okay.
If you want to ask him a specific question, you may, but my understanding is, there is no question pending at this time.
Okay.
So you still have the floor.
All right. Another reason I'm against it is, you're talking now, put more trees down there and beautify and well. First thing, the trees are probably going to plant, aren't even going to be native to the state. So now I'm definitely against it. That's all I have to say. I'm against it. Don't know.
Jackie Vick?
Well, speaking of trees, I didn't hear John specifically mention planting of trees when he was listing the various aspects to the project. So that was my basic question. But I... since I'm up here, I'm going to say, really support the whole project, and I think it would do amazing amount of increasing the different aspects of that whole street. I mean, it is kind of invites speed, and I'm probably guilty of going too fast down there, but if you're walking, it is a little terrifying, especially if you're trying to cross it. So my other part of the question, though, is, will there be more crosswalks, and how will they be designated? Thank you.
Thank you. There's two questions. Are there going to be trees added? If so, how many? And will there be more crosswalks?
Simple answers. The original scoping study had a lot of trees. We felt too many that you wouldn't even be able to see the buildings through them. There are trees, both new trees and also trees to replace the ones that weren't planted right, that just aren't in the right locations. If memory serves me right, about 40 trees between Cottage Street and Center Hill spaced out. And then the second question is the crosswalk question. The area that I see a lot of, you know, jaywalking, I don't even know, chief, is that even a crime anymore? No, I don't think so. I don't think we write tickets for that. But I do see a lot of jaywalking right around Discount Beverage. And right at that spot, you either have a choice of running like hell, and then you see these people that are kind of stuck in the middle that are doing this thing, that they don't know if they're supposed to retreat or go across, and luckily, this is Vermont, and we stop for pedestrians, but I think in other places, we probably have some fatalities. So there will be more crosswalks. We're looking at probably realigning one of the crosswalks onto Riverside Heights, so that Andy Reid can get across the street to get coffee. That was the big complaint that Andy had. Keep the one up at Cottage Street, and then another one mid-block, because we think we've got the right visibility going east and west, and then improving the one down on Center Hill. I should offer one note, too, that the Select Board put together a committee to help guide the design of this. One person that we put on was Jeff Williams. We don't typically put... We don't typically put the people on that maintain roadways on the design committees. It's a huge flaw that everyone has, that we usually hand it over to a guy like Jeff and tell him that he needs to maintain what we just came up with. We have put on Chief Bourne, the owner of Discount Beverage, the owner of Kilburn's, some people from the Planning Commission, Bicycle and Pedestrian and Access Advocates. Janet Hurley's on there, Pauline Moore, who represents the Interest of Businesses. I'm on there. And somebody that's actually focused on the design aspects, because part of it is, we want the whole piece, we want the benches and the trashcans and the streetlights to look like, not just Vermont, but look like Manchester. You know, Vermont comes in all different shapes and sizes. If you were designing something up in Burlington, you might have a nautical theme, but here, that wouldn't be appropriate. So, we're hoping to create an overall image of the street as well, and so that committee will actually help guide that.
Ray Nevin?
Hi, thank you. I just think it's something, the redo of 1130 is so overdue for... I think we had just moved up here when they had converted it from what it was, and it was pretty shocking, actually, to look at what that became. And I don't think that the way 1130 looks now has any connection with the rest of the town, Main Street, Depot, the other streets. It just looks disconnected, it looks very much like a suburban strip street. And we actually went down when they did a walk-through in the spring, and I went with a group. And I hadn't walked there for, literally, I don't think I walked on there probably for twenty years. And when I got down there, I realized why. I mean, it's like walking right now on the side of an expressway. And I think it's very important to, I think the beautification is important, that is an important piece. I'd like to see as many trees as possible, because I think it's very important to tie that in with the rest of the townscape. And, I mean, you look, and you see very few people in the evening walking around town, and I think once that happens, it's going to connect things, and people won't be jumping in their cars to get everywhere, and going from parking lot to parking lot. And I think it's a great step, and I think this is like the missing link. And I'm happy, and I hope that people will vote in favor of this. Thanks.
Thank you. In the rear.
I'm not going to say I'm opposed to it or against it, but I do want to know what kind of lighting is going to be at those crosswalks in that whole strip mall? Because I can vouch from personal experience that up by the roundabout, trying to cross the street in the dark at night is a nightmare. Especially at like six o'clock on a Friday evening, at six o'clock on a Saturday, even on a Monday. It's very difficult to cross that street, and people do not stop at those crosswalks, for anybody.
Question is, what kind of lighting at the crosswalks?
The, I think the roundabout crosswalks, I think it's better than what was there, where you had to run across three lanes of traffic. I'm not sure they're perfect. They're designed to the federal highway design standards, which I don't have really... Maybe the world would be a better place if you and I designed them. But we are a little held hostage to that. I think the one that you're talking about, the Price Chopper Plaza, is probably the one?
No. We, when I, usually when we're walking, we're crossing at the roundabout. Right there at that roundabout.
There will be lighting, the way that we like to design things, there will be lighting at all the crosswalks, and there'll be signs. I could tell you that when we went on the walking tour, the crosswalk at Price Chopper was really a mess. It's sitting right in the middle of the curb cut for the plaza. There doesn't seem to be anything that differentiates the crosswalk from the curb cut. When you get across the road, it's not much better. So, we would like to move that one, because there's way too many things happening all at that particular location. There's also not really very good lighting there, at all of the different crosswalks. There is decent lighting, I think, to some extent, up by Center Hill, where we have the actual lights. But all the way down Depot Street, the lighting is not very effective. But rest assured that we will have good lighting that's appropriate for crosswalks on Depot Street.
Because I know, like I was saying, the lighting that's there currently at the roundabout is not very good. I mean, that lighting that's there, you can barely see people in the crosswalk, or even standing on the sidewalk, unless they're standing underneath the light.
There is a, Ms. Meyer, just a real quick follow-up. There are two different kinds of lights. The ones that were put in, as far as the roundabout projects, actually have a globe that points down. It's a flat lens. They're not my favorite. I know for some people that are concerned about light pollution, they like those better. The ones that we put into the Town Green, which have a, like an opaque globe here, and the light spreads out more side to side instead of just straight down, that's my favorite kind, and that's the kind that, at least for what it's worth, I would advocate for the Depot Street project. Because it is a downtown, I wouldn't use those in a residential neighborhood, but it's a downtown area, and I feel like that lighting, that actually creates an overall lighting pattern is better than the ones that we have in the roundabout that just focus the light downward.
Okay. My other question is, we're talking about putting bike lanes in. That, I'm assuming then, is going to mean that each one of those traveled lanes, car lanes, is going to be how much narrower?
Can I respond, Mike?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Right now, curb to curb, we have forty feet. And we have fourteen-foot traveled ways, which is actually the interstate standard. Most of our roads in town are somewhere around ten or eleven feet wide. So, we'd be talking about something more appropriate to that. And then the turning lane, because you're decelerating when you're taking a turn, that would be even a little bit more narrow. But you're talking about four-to-five-foot travel lanes, or bike lanes on the sides, that would actually serve as an area that you and I would pull off to when the fire trucks go by. So, you'd actually be able to pull over, there wouldn't be any hardscape between the two. And then a ten-to-eleven-foot travel way, and then the turning lane in the middle, and then the repeat on the other side. But it's actually a fairly, it's a fairly wide roadway. And actually, if you stand there and look, we were standing on the bridge near Price Chopper and looking down the road, when a car comes down, it kind of looks like the old ten pounds of potatoes in a twenty-pound bag. It just, there's a ton of room on either side of the car when you're looking at it. So, there is plenty of space there. It is a road that serves commercial trucks.
Exactly.
And if you can't get commercial trucks through town, you and I aren't going to eat at Shaw's or Price Chopper. Trucks need to come into town, and we're very aware of that need, that we need to, that this is a state-numbered highway, and the state is aware of that, too, as well. So, that even if we wanted to create a roadway that wasn't accessible to trucks, they wouldn't let us do it anyways. This is a state-numbered highway, it's one of our main, it's actually the busiest road in town.
And those standards meet that truck standard, as well as a vehicle standard?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Dupont?
My question is, can you tell me of another town that has a major thoroughfare coming into it that has bike lanes? I'd like to know if that has been in anybody's study? Because that's a very important factor. The other thing I'd like to know is, who's going to have the liability on this? Is it, first of all, Vermont has the second-oldest populace in the country. Maine is number one, Vermont is number two. So, you're taking a wide lane that everyone really appreciates, you're narrowing it, and when you make your turn to Price Chopper, if you have a biker coming in back of you, and if he doesn't stop, and you don't see him, you have a liability. Who has the liability?
General Keefe, two questions.
Well, it's interesting that you point out the demographic. Part of this fits into a larger plan to try to attract younger workers. I used to be a young worker, I think they've moved me out of that category now. So, I'm not saying I know exactly what they want, I don't think a lot of us know what these younger workers want. What I've been told is, they do like to ride bicycles. Bicycles are allowed on Depot Street right now as it is, so you already have that existing liability. What we've studied is that having dedicated bike lanes actually make the overall environment safer. I think we all know that this is not Boston, Massachusetts, but I will relay a story of Boston, Massachusetts. Prior to my bicycling here, I decided I would try to bicycle in Boston. This was in the early 2000s, and it didn't, it didn't work. It worked even worse than this experiment here. Fast forward ahead. And back then, Boston was considered one of the worst cities in America to bicycle in, believe it or not. Fast forward ahead, most of these streets in Boston now have bike lanes on them. So, I'm not sure there's another city, I know Burlington has some dedicated bike lanes. And again, we're not Burlington, Burlington's much bigger than Manchester. But there are cities that have done this, and it's called a complete street, which means it serves the needs of all people, pedestrians, bicyclists, trucks and cars, and all the like.
And her second question was as to who has the liability?
Oh, I don't see it as any additional liability, like I was, sorry, Mike, I was trying to address that.
Yep.
Because bicycles, you know, bicycles are not supposed to ride on the sidewalks. They're supposed to be actually in the road. So, the liability exists there today. So, there is no increased liability. I will tell you that we did have a bicycle accident on Depot Street, which I'm not sure was related to this or not, but they do happen. And the chief would do an investigation and determine who was liable. But in my opinion, again, not an expert on bicycle safety, and certainly not a lawyer, but bicycles are supposed to follow the same laws as you and I. So, if a bicycle runs a red light and you hit them, or a red stop sign and you hit them, the bicycle is liable.
There's just one other little thing I'd like to throw into the mix. Right now, with the marijuana law passing the Senate in Vermont and going to the House, it hasn't passed the House. If you have a lot of people starting to smoke marijuana, and they're having trouble with this in Colorado in driving cars, they might have trouble on bikes. I want to know if the police and the fire people have given their approval on this, because they'll be the very busy people.
Approval on the project or on the marijuana law?
On the project.
Mike, you want me to...
Go ahead.
I, I can't get into the Montpelier thing. I can tell you that our chief of police is not in favor of that. But I will say that, and one of the concerns that he has is that it is difficult to give somebody a driving under the influence ticket for marijuana or for other types of drugs.
No, I think, I think the question is, have they approved the project?
Yes.
They don't, they're not in a position to approve the budget, or to approve the project. The fire department has given us their comments about the raised median in the middle, and we've responded to that. So, they are involved in the process. I will tell you that you can get a drunk-driving charge on a bicycle, and you can get it on a lawnmower, and you can get it on a horse. So, the same laws that apply to cars also apply to bicycles. So, if you're driving drunk on a bike, it's a DUI.
That's fine, but basically... My question was, have they had input and have they approved the bicycle lanes? That's what I wanted to know.
I think the answer was...
No.
Their approval was not asked for, their comments were solicited and taken into account.
Thank you for the artful summary.
Thank you.
Sylvia, since you have already spoken, I'm going to go to Mr. Morrow, who I don't believe has spoken on this issue yet.
I'd just like to say, as a point of information, that Mayor Bloomberg is noted throughout the United States and mostly in Europe, because he's turned New York City into a much more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly city, much in the way, taking as examples many of the great cities of Europe, which all have bicycle lanes.
Mike, can I speak, please?
Steve Nichols, yeah. Sylvia, just to explain, someone who's already spoken once has to yield to anyone who hasn't spoken on this question. Steve?
While we were talking on the Select Board about this issue, I'd asked that, you know, the $58,000 is going to be the matching for the grant, but I'd asked John for a basic schematic, so we could bring it here and show the people what it is. Now, we're asking the taxpayers $58,000 with really, basically, you-know-nothing. We may have a rise in the middle, we may have these lights, we may have that lights. Grub has shared his point of view. As I've heard it, they're not in favor of it, they have some issues. The same with Chief Hall. You know, am I, I think we need some work down there, yeah, I think we need crosswalks. I think we need some trees. But y'all are asking to vote for $58,000, are really seeing nothing.
Mr. Dupont? Tony, Dupont, are you waiting there?
No, my name is Lyle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The first seven articles, we didn't cut a penny, as far as I can see. This article, eight, nine, and ten, but eight in particular. These things seem like they're nice ideas, but are they necessary? Are they something we have to have as a town? If we're going to start cutting taxes, or at least holding taxes, should we keep spending money on things that are nice rather than necessary?
Thank you, and I'm sorry I didn't get your name.
Lyle, L-I-E-L-L.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't... Pete Cohn?
Yep. I'm a bicyclist, and I ride down Depot Street quite a bit. I have no problem with it, as it is. I think if you were to bike on 7A from the roundabout to the Equinox House, you're going to have a lot harder time. It's skinnier, the road, I mean, the road's narrower. You're going to hold up traffic, people get upset. To drive from the roundabout to the Equinox is not very safe on the road. The same goes for going from the roundabout to, like Riley Rink, until you get up around Manchester Engine Works. It's pretty dangerous. Cars are going faster there than they go down Depot Street. Another thing is about putting trees in, I'm opposed to that. They used to have trees in front of the Polo Store, and I believe those were cut down. They, I think they create more of a problem than what they're worth for beauty or whatever. I guess that's it. I encourage the voters of Manchester to vote this down until more study has been done. And I don't mean paying outsiders to do it. I mean our own town government to come up with a plan. I don't think we need a outside source. Guess that's it.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the rear.
Hi there, I'm Theo Talkat. I organize with Transition Town Manchester and also the Manchester River Walk Committee. I support this project. I would like to see Manchester be a lot more walkable, a lot more bikeable. The Vermont Council of Rural Development came here ten years ago, and we had a long talk as a group and a community about what we wanted to do. One of the things was to become more bikeable. The Vermont Council of Rural Development wants to come back and meet with us again to follow up, so look forward to that. So, there's a lot of money that's being offered to us. It's only sixty grand we're being asked to pay, and they'll give us half a million. It's a frugal Vermont deal, it seems like. And we should make our town more bikeable, so, thanks. And this fits in with the Manchester River Walk development project, too. So, the Depot Street stuff will be a nice link to what we're trying to do along the river.
Okay, anyone who has not spoken on this article? Bill Dransek?
Quickly, this project is not new. It's been on the drawing boards, as Ivan said, for fifteen years. The Planning Commission studied it, there's the Transportation Initiative Committee that helped formulate the plans. There's public hearings on it, and so on. And after fifteen years of discussion and a lot of effort after the roundabout was put in place, you know, there was, it got accelerated, and here's where we are today, with a lot of input from various members of the committee. Now, it's not perfect for everybody, but the whole point of the project is traffic calming. It's to reduce the raceway effect of that stretch of road, and to make it safer for people to cross and to beautify the area a little bit. Now, we had the same discussion for twenty years on the roundabout. Now, we had the same discussion for 20 years on the roundabout, back and forth, and so on and so forth, and, you know, I think everybody who takes a step back, or at least 95% of the people are saying, yeah, that project, it works. And there were naysayers, and some of those peoples had turned around and said, yes, I was wrong, it works. I think this project is in a similar vein. We know what we have, and we're used to it, it's okay, but I think when this project is done, it's gonna be an additional complement to the roundabout, what we've done already for beautifying the town, making it more comfortable for various forms of transportation or getting about other than the automobile. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Wilson?
Thanks. I just felt compelled to offer another cyclist's perspective. You know, one, the scaryest thing for any cyclist is traveling on a traveled road where you have a lot of parking lots pulling, people pulling out, and Depot Street has a lot of that, and it's, that can be scary for cyclists. And I was hit by a car two years ago on the Cape, you know, went right over his hood, guy pulled out, wasn't looking, and I won't ride in Cape Cod again. There's a lot of people who won't ride in Cape Cod because of that, and we don't want to become a place like that. So, I, there've been, you know, quite a few cycling deaths in Vermont this past year, and people, you know, cyclists are nervous right now. And while there may not be many towns in Vermont that have cycling lanes, that might be a reason for us to have cycling lanes. Cyclists are looking for places to ride safely, and I think we can become that place, especially with the paving, the increased paving efforts, which I appreciate. As cyclists, the shoulders are currently really dangerous, and I think that that's gonna benefit, and so adding, you know, another asset like this could be good for the, meeting the goal of Manchester 2020 with a cycling goal. And, you know, also having the bike shop in town now, we could see a greater flow of cyclists in town, you know, tourists coming in renting, renting bikes. And so, with all these things said, I appreciate the, personally, as a cyclist, the push to increase safety so I can, you know, not just for me, but I can go with my daughter, ride my bike with my daughter to school, which I like to do, and so she'll be safer as well. So, no question, I just wanted to add that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Powers?
Well, John sort of stole my thunder, but in 98, I had a rather severe biking accident where the small roundabout is, and I think anything you can do to make biking more safe in the center of town, the better it is. And incidentally, I live on North Road, and I observe Wendy's Way, and Wendy's Way is a wonderful rural area to bike in, but it's not the safest area to bike in, because there's really not enough room on the, going east on the road to avoid the traffic that's going generally 50 miles an hour. That's just an aside. I say that so, because the chief is here. You want to raise the revenues of Manchester, may I suggest you put a speed trap on the North Road. You'll do very well, but please, anything you can do to make biking safer on Depot Street and any other street in town, it's only to our benefit, and that's the reason we live here.
[applause]